To call a meeting of the, the joint meeting of the Carson City School District and the Carson City Board of Supervisors to order today is the, what is today?
20th.
20th. Man, it didn't change since this morning. Okay. It's the 20th of February. We're at the community center at, at the Sierra Room. And we're also on the public access channel and also streaming on the internet. Could we have a, kind of a roll call from you guys from the board starting and then have a roll call on our, the Board of Supervisors?
Richard Varner from the School Board, Representative District Four.
Yeah, good. Let's just go around.
Stacy Giome, Carson City Board of Supervisors.
Don Corini, School Board Trustee.
John Barrett, Supervisor Ward Four.
Mike Walker, President of the School Board.
Bob Crowell, Mayor of Carson City.
Joe Cassioppo, Vice President, School Board.
Lori Bagwell, Supervisor Ward Three.
Stacy Wilkie, School Board.
Laurel Crossman, School Board.
Brad Bonkowski, Carson City Supervisor.
Lupita Ramirez, School Board.
Could we have a flag salute led by Superintendent Bonkowski? Please, please stand.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brad. Okay, so let me take this one then on our side of the adoption of the agenda and then turn it over to Mike for their, the School Board's adoption as well. So on the agenda, any members, any board members want to change anything on the agenda on our side? Anybody? So absent, absent objection, the Board of Supervisors will adopt the agenda as published. Mike, you want to go?
Sure. So our first item or our second item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I'll look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. So we have a motion by Trustee Varner, second by Trustee Cassioppo. Any public comment, discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Can you post? Motion passes.
Okay, we'll move on to item number, it's on our agenda, it's item number 23, but this is a time for public comment. The public is invited at this time to comment and discuss any topic that is relevant to or with any authority of these public bodies. Let's just jointly do it. Is there any public comment addressed to either the School Board or the Board of Supervisors? Long day for you.
Actually, um, thank you very much, uh, Pres- Mayor and President and Board. Thank you. Um, Denny French, Carson City, Nevada. I have brought this up at a council meeting and I suggest that I do understand that the FCC is the regulator, but that Congress have challenges relating to cell phone towers and their safety. And what we can do as far as having choices is really based on the fact that if we consider it unsightly, we can make a recommendation as to change in location. And I think location, location, location in this case is very important to consider. So thank you very much.
Very good. And Denny, uh, we have an ordinance that we drafted on that very issue, on small, small cell deployment. Uh, my understanding is, is that, you know, we can't prohibit small cell deployment, but we can do things about where they're placed and what they look like.
That's basically what they said. If you, you could complain about how it looked and then get the location considered differently. And that was my main concern here is that you understood that that was your one option on getting the location figured out for your own needs. Thank you.
Very good. All right. Any other public comment? Anybody? Okay, I don't see any, uh, so turn it over to Mike for any welcome remarks, anything you want to say there, Mr. President.
You know, I would just say that this is always, uh, I know it's a long day for our supervisors and you, Mayor, but it's an important day because education is really the basis of what we all do. And no matter what problems we're facing, the root of the solution is usually found in education. And so this is important work and, um, I'm proud of our two boards for coming together in this time.
Yeah, I think we're the only board, I've said this before, I think we're the only board and, and Board of Supervisors and School Board in Nevada that meets jointly. Uh, and I'll just echo what the President here said is that, you know, education is extremely important for the success of democracy. Democracy is not a spectator sport, it's one where you have to participate and education is the basis of that. Uh, and, uh, the, the meeting between both of our boards gives us a chance to understand what each of our jurisdictions, each of our, our, our relevant jurisdictions are doing so that we can proceed down on a strategic plan for both of us so that we all know we're on the same page and I believe we are. Tonight, we've got some great things to talk about, uh, and we'll hear about those in the next agenda item. All right? Want me to, want me to call him up? You want to do it?
Sure. So the next item on the agenda is the discussion and presentation of the K-12 Tesla Investment Fund gift awarded to the Carson City School District in the amount of $712,250 to fund district-wide sustainability initiatives for the next three years. And that's Mark Cornick and Chris Riley.
It's a computer, Chris. You find one of those at Tesla, so.
I was an assistant DJ right there.
You drive your Tesla here tonight?
Sir, yeah, yes, I did.
All right, all right.
City Supervisors and School Board, thank you very much for having us here tonight. This is Mark Cornick, Director of Operations for the School Board, or for the School District. And I have Chris Riley from Tesla with me. I'm going to go quickly first. And I did provide the boards with some documents, um, which was a, a bullet point, one page of, um, of the project itself, um, a sustainability partnership timeline, and also, um, a copy of the Green Schools National Network Green Print, which is basically their strategic plan for green, healthy, sustainable schools. So I'm going to refer to those a couple times as we go through, um, so that I can go quickly. Um, so quickly, we're going to, we're, we're just going to go over the sustainability initiative and the partnership with Tesla, Green Schools, the city, Envirolutions, and the school district. And so why, why do we want green, healthy, sustainable schools? If you go through the items here, increased sense of ownership by teachers, students, staff, basically that stewardship, right? And gives more ownership at your school and your location. Economic savings associated with this, um, reduced operation costs. Um, we've been doing that for years in the school district. And that money doesn't come back to my boss who's not here tonight yet, um, but it goes back to the kids, it goes back to school. Increased, uh, protection of our natural resources, increased student-staff health and wellness, that's part of our strategic plan, health and wellness. Um, it's also part of, uh, Green Healthy Sustainable Schools strategic plan. Increased connection with the committee, with the community. Again, ditto, that's part of our strategic plan as well as green, healthy, sustainable schools. Use of the school and business sites as teaching tool for PB, uh, PB3, Project Problem and Base Learning, uh, Place Learning, um, that's in our strategic plan as well. And we find that a lot of children, uh, learn better when they have something in their hands and they can work through it. Uh, and then the students are our next-gen caretakers, right? They're loaning us this planet right now and we don't, uh, we don't want to use it up or we don't want to mess it up. So, uh, in 2011, we started preparing for this strategic plan, which was an awesome community achievement, um, one of the best things I've seen in the school district. And wherever I go, I tell people about this and they're really impressed with what we've done. So at that time, we came up with, um, five strategic goals, right, through the strategic plan. And, um, Goal One, which is a community and full partnership, um, in the Green Print. Their Goal Five is strong partnerships. So this also relates there. Goal Three, and ours, is healthy generations. Goal Four is health and well-being in Green Print. And, uh, curriculum that matters is our Goal Four. And advanced, uh, environmental literature and sustainability learning is their Goal Four. So we, we're following this pathway of green, sustainable, healthy schools. And, um, it just, um, it, it just, uh, has combined what we're doing in the city, what we're doing in the school district, and what is good for our kids sustainably. I also believe, uh, Number Three is, in the Green Print, is sustainable facility design and management. We don't have that in our plan, but we've been doing that for years. The same year we started this strategic plan, we built nearly two megawatts of PV solar and, um, at the same time, the city was putting up solar as well. Empower Carson City 2022. This was the refreshes of strategic plan, strategic plan. And what I did is I went through that plan and I started pulling out these words. And all of these words are either in our goals, our strategies, or our values that are printed. And all of these items relate to sustainability themselves. STEM, STEAM, um, critical thinking, relevant curriculum, project-based learning, um, social responsibility, these are all the things we want to teach our children and it all relates to green, sustainable, healthy schools. But I think my favorite strategy was this one here. It said, "Through community partnerships and district resources, students will have the opportunity to learn about environmentally friendly actions and sustainable practices." And so this, um, again, was my favorite and it's really a game changer in what we're doing with green schools. So, uh, sustain, the sustainable partnership, um, let's see, where did I have that one? Here. Okay. So this multi-year collaboration will lead to the advancement of district-wide education for sustainability initiatives. These items, um, you know, it forms a, strengthening of the city, community, and school district partnership and these are, this is integration into what we're already doing. This is not on top of what we're doing. So how do we do this? Well, first, what we've done is we developed a dashboard that's going to track our utilities, it's going to track analytics so that we can analyze energy efficiency, it'll provide classroom data for STEM projects, and it'll also be public display at our schools, showing the public what we're doing in those schools as far as energy conservation, um, carbon footprint, et cetera. Carson High, at Carson High School CTE program and the work-based learning, we're providing, we're going to work on an, uh, eco-mapping for, of partners. And these are partners that are in the sustainability area, um, that our, that our, uh, teachers can call on for, um, guest speakers and those kinds of things. In fact, we already have one going with the city. Um, I had helped Empire, which is Governor STEM School, um, contact Kelly Hale, who's an environmental control foreman at the city. And she did all our lead testing for us, uh, in conjunction with a grant with the NDEP. And, um, she's going to come in the end of this, or tomorrow, and work with the STEM class on water quality and show them how, um, how she did the, the testing and, um, our STEM coach over there is awesome and she's built a, um, a curric, or a lesson on this. So all the fifth graders are going to learn this tomorrow. So that's just one example of some of the partnership ideas we could have. Um, Envirolution, Project Recharge, it's a STEM program that's in two of our middle school, our two middle schools right now. We plan on trying to, um, uh, promote that a little bit more and have a couple other teachers do it. They're also developing a fifth grade program for us so that now we can start with an early STEM program in elementary school where a lot of the teachers don't have the materials or the know-how to do this. So in that elementary school, that program would come with a couple thousand dollars worth of stuff that the teachers could use, um, to start with simple motors and force in motion and, and some programs like that. Uh, integration and connecting elementary school, middle school, and high school STEM along with the CTE program. We want natural steps from each one of those levels in the schools. And each, and representatives from each of those levels are involved with this, uh, partnership. Um, we're, we're looking at a coordinate, a coordinator position, um, that'll be funded in that. It could be a TOSSER, it could be a coordinator that's going to help with the mapping, training, data collection, and, um, school connection. Green Schools National Network is one of the partners. It'll be providing some training and some integration of the Green Print. And then one of their partners is John Hopkins. So they'll do a study on this. This is a three-year program, so we're going to study this and make sure that we share the experience with others and document the success. And then, of course, our partner Tesla is funding this. So to the good part, the city part. Our partnership together, this is something that we've been talking about in a couple meetings in the mayor's office. And, um, we still need to develop a plan, but these are the ideas that we had. Some workplace learning opportunities with Public Works, uh, high school internships, job shadowing, facility tours, those kinds of things. Classroom guest speakers, student-run energy audits in city buildings. We don't have as many opportunities in our school, schools anymore to do audits because we're so efficient. But, uh, the same thing is happening in the city. The city's pretty efficient as well. So that's why I reached out to the Governor's Office of Energy and they're willing to put some state buildings out there so our kids can go in and do audits and, and learn about efficiency. Community service learning projects, or service learning projects. Um, I talked to Darren, um, the other day, included him in an email, and a couple of our schools want to do a service learning project for Earth Day. So there are some cleanup projects and there's some connection that we can have with the Sustainability ambassadors, this is just kind of an idea I thought of the other day and I threw it on here. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I haven't told you about this one yet, so.
It's okay. I expect you to surprise us, that's fine.
Uh, so this could happen at city events, right? This year at Nevada Day, we had recycling and we had a, I think the, uh, Waste Management and Green Up had sponsored that. So, you know, if we had some students or city folks that want to be ambassadors at these events and, uh, farmers market, those kinds of things. Um, and then a commute, uh, one of the ideas, the mayor had this idea a while back when we did this last year at Empire, a community, uh, sustainability night or workshop. Um, so we've been talking about, uh, some, you know, public education, awareness, information. Uh, we work with our partners, the, uh, Capital Cities Sustainable Partners, uh, Nevada Green Institute, Sierra Forums, the Greenhouse Project, uh, and then Green Up, who has the Green Dining District here in, in Carson. Those would be great partners to have displaying some information for our public. Lastly, um, these were some of the quotes from the staff when we had a couple meetings and I thought they were relevant in that enhancing and rich is, um, is enriching and enhancing what we're already doing. We're doing a lot of this stuff, so how do we integrate sustainability in there and enhance and enrich that? The same with looking at it a different way, looking at it through a sustainability lens, what we're doing and just integrating that. And then I just accelerate goodness. I don't know where that came from. I actually.
Good statement.
Yeah, I, I, I think it has to do with, uh, social emotional learning and I think it might have been Principal Squires that came up with that, so we'll give her credit for that, but, uh, I just liked the term, so I threw it in there.
Good idea.
And that's all I have for you. I'd turn it over to Chris.
So let me ask you a que, can I do that? Let me ask you a question, Mark, or Chris. Is part of this grant going to allow you to, uh, fill a position of a sustainability manager at a school district?
Currently, no. Not, not in this first phase that I know of. I mean, that could be something we talk about later if, if all of other, all of our other plans come together and we have funding left over. I know you talked about maybe, um, splitting that. Maybe, uh, there's a position where it's part city, part school district, um, and then we could use that to keep the partnership going and then, um, somewhat teach each other, I guess.
Yeah, it would be, you know, maybe it's pie in the sky goal, but it would be a, a sustainability manager for Carson City, not just the school district. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh.
Stressing Renee out. That's bad news.
That's why my wife told me when I got home, hey, I can't hear you. Well, I told her, I says, you know, you're not supposed to hear me. But, uh, you know, what, you know, kind of the idea that I had, and again, it might be pie in the sky, is, you know, hire one person as a sustainability manager for the entire city. The city government side of stuff, you know, the school district and the Board of Supervisors, I don't know what that would cost, but I think it, it's well worthwhile going down that drill to find out, to dedicate one person to sustainability initiatives and kind of take a load off your side of things, but it would also, uh, facilitate the programs that you're talking about here and facilitate some of the programs that we've got working on the city side of things. So I don't know if we can budget that, probably not this year, but, uh, I think we ought to, the two jurisdictions ought to get together and see if we can work through if that's a good idea or a bad idea.
Well, I think it's a good idea and I, you know, I've heard it from your engineers and, and Darren and Tom Grundy and they're all interested, but they're, they're real busy at what they're doing, so something has to, has to take the backseat. But I know they're very interested in the field and I often get comments, and I've been on several committees regionally with Tom Grundy as well, and he's, he's there participating, um, when he can, so.
Good. Chris?
All right. Well, I first just want to say thank you all so much, uh, for, for having me here tonight. Uh, my name's Chris Riley. I focus on, uh, workforce development and education programs for Tesla. Um, have been, uh, with the company about, uh, three years, I think, this week now. Um, and, and have always had a, a passion for Northern Nevada. My, uh, wife was born here and, and we were just so excited, uh, when the opportunity happened and, and when we talk about, about the growth and, and who Tesla is as a company, um, our, our mission is really the lens by which everything we look at. Um, and, and our goal as a company, as Tesla, is really to accelerate our transition to a sustainable future. Um, and that really involves working together. Um, and, and Mayor and President Walker, when I was learning about this, this joint meeting, I thought that was such a good illustration example of this, uh, of, of groups coming together around a common goal and getting things done and, and I just, that, that has been totally how we have felt this entire process of, of partnering with the school district, partnering with the city, uh, on these education opportunities and, and this investment, um, specifically. And just, uh, really quickly, kind of backing up and, and talking about, you know, our, our goals, we're really focused on, on bringing that mission to life and, and the way we simply want to do that is we want to make, we want to create energy from the sun. We want to store it in giant batteries and we want to use it across all major vehicle segments. Uh, and so that's, that's what we do as a company. Uh, and in order for us to do that, um, we looked at our growth and, and we saw that if we wanted to create 500,000 electric vehicles a year as a company, we would have to double the world's production of lithium ion batteries. And we'd have to do it in one place, uh, and we'd have to do it, uh, in about five years. Um, and so, uh, we set a, a journey and, uh, back in 2014, we broke ground on, on the Gigafactory Nevada, um, here in Northern Nevada. And this was, this was a shot of it in 2016. Um, it's probably a million square feet. And then about nine months later, it looked a little different, uh, so there's a couple more cars in the parking lot. Um, and we continued to grow the building and grow the workforce. And today, we have, uh, over 6,000 employees on the Tesla side, uh, 3,500 on the Panasonic side, hundreds of other, uh, incredible partners there. So we see about 10,000 people any given week, um, that are there for a full-time career. Um, and what we do there is we create all of our electric motors for our vehicles, for our Model 3, for our upcoming Model Y, uh, and as well for some of our Model S and Model X vehicles. Uh, we create all of our battery packs for our Model 3, Model Y. And then our entire energy storage business, which we see being as big as our vehicle business one day, is all made right here in Nevada. Uh, and that's something we're incredibly proud of as a company and has all happened in these past few years. Um, but as part of our journey, uh, in building Gigafactory here in Nevada, uh, we committed 37 and a half million dollars in an investment fund to further K-12 STEM education. And when we looked at this, we said, what, how, how can we help have the best impact that reflects our mission? Um, and we really wanted to focus on two areas. We wanted to focus on robotics and we wanted to focus on sustainability and do this in a way where it helps support the next generation of engineers here in Nevada. Um, and when we looked at this and, and we looked at the scale of opportunities, I remember one of the first, um, events I ever we, went to was a group called Envirolution, uh, which is a nonprofit, uh, here that works with our schools, uh, that Mark mentioned. Uh, and the students, I'll quote of this, uh, were in classrooms and doing energy audits and figuring out ways to improve their schools. And the teachers got 12 weeks worth of classroom materials and then the last six weeks, they broke up into energy detectives. And they got the actual NV Energy bill and they ran around and figured out, okay, how many light bulbs are here and, and here? And I was like, wow, that's, that's like, kind of like what we do sometimes. Uh, and we got really excited and we said, how can we make this a program that's in every school? How can we create this real-life project-based learning across our community? Um, and we started seeing students actually pitch real projects, uh, with Tesla energy storage, with solar, uh, with ways to make their HVAC systems more efficient, their refrigeration, and we wanted to build a big partnership. Um, and while we were also doing that, we were hosting students. And so we've probably brought about 3,000-plus students, teachers, and educators, uh, through the factory over the past couple of years. Um, these are Eagle Valley, uh, middle school students, uh, on the left who came over. Uh, we just actually hosted, uh, 80 female engineering students across Carson City, uh, middle schools this morning as part of, uh, National Engineers Week and Introduce a Girl to Engineering Day, which was, uh, just another very exciting partnership. And, uh, I mentioned these because they're all inspired by the community and, and in partnership with the community. And so when we were thinking about, how do we scale something out, um, across an entire district? And, and seeing the passion that you all have had and, and the progress that you've already made on sustainability, uh, within the school district, one of the concepts was talking about really bringing this across all of our buildings. And, and we see students doing energy audits across our legislative buildings and, and inspiring our leaders, inspiring the entire community. Um, and so it, it's just been something that we feel very fortunate to be a part of and, um, are really looking forward to launching this initiative together and, um, bringing this to life in our schools. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. Any questions?
I'll just warn everybody that, you know, when I was working at Carson Middle School is when we put in the solar panels in the parking lot. And there, in one of the hallways, there's a little contraption, I don't even know what you'd call it, that says how much energy is saved. And, you know, whereas this is all new to most of us, the kids are right there, they're in it, they understand it. And this one girl figured it out and she came to me one day and she said, well, we have a problem. That is not accurate. And I said, what are you talking about? Um, that's not showing us the right amount of energy that's saved. I was, oh, okay, well, let me look into it. And, you know, there's a lot of things that I had to deal with at Carson Middle School. And, you know, there's a lot of things that I had to deal with at Carson Middle School. That was the only thing I shied away from. But I mean, and it's because I just, I really didn't understand how she even knew that that wasn't the appropriate or right amount of energy. And so I think that it kind of shows that it's allowing stuff like these types of programs and opportunities for students are giving them a way to get ready for the world that's coming that some of us in the classroom and running schools today aren't prepared to explain accurately or adequately. And so your partnership, I think, is really key to kind of opening those doors and providing opportunities. And I think that's really great.
No, thank you. Yeah, it's been exciting to hear. Students will come home from the Project Recharge exercises, and they'll audit their light bulbs in their house and tell their parents about how much energy they could be saving. And it starts to kind of inspire this larger effect. And we do see this as just incredibly transferable to the workforce. And we recognize, you know, nearly 90% Nevadan is our facility, and this is our home. And that's how we feel we can have this impact is by directly supporting these programs. And not just financially, it's, you know, that equally important to that number is also the volunteer engagement and bringing that talent to empower our teachers to increase confidence. So that was, it was fantastic, I mean, to host you all out at the factory and discuss different case studies, because this is just that first step in implementing a program like this. We're really thinking about, you know, the infrastructure needs, the teacher development and the training, and then the workforce side, you know, our high school graduate apprenticeship programs and continuing to build those out together.
Any other questions, Joe?
Mike or Mark, maybe for you. Maybe we're going to figure this out through the pilot process. But do you, you know, we, first of all, I think it's a great program, and I want to thank Tesla for, you know, such generosity. I think this is exciting, and I'm all behind it. But our teachers are pretty overworked right now. How does this fit into, over time, the requirements that we were already imposing on them? Is there, you know, I want to make sure we're working with them so that we're not burning them out, asking them to do more than what they can fit into a workday, and also getting the students involved in a way that we're not overtasking them as well. I mean, school is so much different now than when we all went to school. It's, I don't know if I'd have survived now. But I'm just wondering if we know any of that now, or is this what we're going to kind of vet out as part of these pilot programs?
I think we will vet it out during the program, but that was some of the very first questions that Mrs. Fuson brought forward, too. And in fact, she's the one that used that enhancement and rich. What we're trying to do is integrate it so that it makes their, it's part of their job, and it actually makes their job easier. And I've seen, and we've already seen that at Empire, where some of the teachers were kind of skeptical about the STEM program that they were having there. But the training program that they put together has been so inclusive to all the teachers. And now they're starting to say, well, now I can see how this is making my job easier. And they've had that comment from a couple of teachers already. So all we can do is try, right, and keep moving forward. But we understand that load. Jeez, we see it every day in our schools, right? So I hope to, we hope to help with that.
And it's, yeah, it is. It is something where it can be so overwhelming, how many programs or how many, you know, and we have to be super conscious of that. And I know, you know, on the Tesla side, that's part of the reason we don't immediately say, hey, you know, we think we should have this program, this program, this program. It's all about listening. It's about bringing the teachers on and saying, what are you most excited about? And that's honestly how we heard about EnviroLution and Project Recharge and heard that that made students more excited to come back to school, our projects. And so we said, okay, well, how do we elevate that program? And how do we see programs similar to that, maybe on the robotics side, like First Robotics, that we see really changing that future workforce? And not, you know, overwhelmed with too many different programs, but amplified those specific ones.
And I appreciate that feedback, because I think that's the success of this, is finding a way to implement it into where it's enhancing and not adding on top of what they're doing. I think there's a place for it, and I think for the students, it's fantastic. So thanks for keeping that, you know, in mind as we go forward.
And complimenting the standards with this coursework is, it's just, you know, that helps, you know, eliminate duplication on it.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment. I can vouch for your program and how excited the kids get, because fortunately, my granddaughter is one of the girls that got to go today. And I heard all about it for about an hour and a half after she got home. She had recordings of people giving the speeches, and it was a very good experience for her and I think for all the children, so I think it's a great program. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it was, I just, I got to see some of the feedback forms. And when we started the day, the students said, how many of you are going to be, have thought about being an engineer already? A few students raised their hand, fifth, sixth, seventh grade. And at the end of the day, you saw this energizing, like everyone raising their hands and confidence. And, you know, someone wrote in the comments, one of the students said, like, I wasn't interested in being an engineer, but today I got to build things, and I got to watch my friends build things, and I was really proud of it. And I just thought that illustrated it really well.
Just to follow up on what Richard said. Some of my travels in the last couple of weeks here, I ran into a parent who said, I know you. I heard you speak at the Empire School District Sustainability Night. So you're not reaching just only the kids, you're reaching the parents as well. I mean, I thought that was, you know, that's an indication that was completely off the cuff, where, you know, parents are getting involved as well. And I think, you know, my kids are too old to give me an hour and a half, but talks a lot. And let me say on behalf of the community in Carson City, I think I could say that here as the mayor, thanks to Tesla for all that you're doing to help bring sustainability issues and sustainability measures and help to Carson City for all of us. I mean, not just our city government, but our school district government. It's the right thing to do for the 21st century, and it's probably the most important thing we can do for the 21st century, sustainability over time. The world is changing faster and faster, and we need to stay ahead of those things, particularly for our kids who are going to be coming up and being in those workforces and making those decisions for us. So, you know, I agree with you that the money is worthwhile, and it's important to do. It's probably more important to have the emphasis behind it, behind those dollars as to what we're doing. And so on behalf of all of us here, we'd like to thank Tesla. And I could, you could take this back to your boss. Thanks to Chris Riley, too.
Thank you all so much. I really appreciate it.
And just on that same note, I mean, the generous contribution, which is so much appreciated. And I think one of the things that we're dealing with as a school board is looking at a reality where we're looking at really effective programs, but we're going to have less and less dollars to support those programs. And so grants like this allow us to continue working towards being more sustainable. And it eliminates the need to kind of cut back on some of those programs, which are so important to students, because we have some funds to devote towards that. So it's very beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on. Thanks, Richard.
It's like I'm with Mr. Swerse.
Yeah, right. We're on 25 Bravo. This is discussion only. This is the introduction of the new Carson City Library Director, Todd Colegrove. Who's doing this? Nancy, or you got the library folks here? Where's Todd? Come on up here, Todd.
Todd's just going to come up and tell us a little bit about himself. And then he's been here for a little over four months. And then the library has a presentation after that.
Very good. Why didn't get to hear all of your background when we met in the garage, Todd? So we'll hear it today.
Mr. Mayor, I'll try to be good and, and...
Don't forget, you know, I know you don't forget, but libraries are an important part of sustainability in terms of the education, the educational environment they bring as well. In my view, libraries are probably right up there near the top in terms of education awareness and assistance for teaching our kids in this school and teaching adults as well. So, you know, I think the library has gone off to a very good start on that. And I would hope that, you know, I know you and I have talked. You're going to continue all, continue that down the road. So give it a shot, talk.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, and members of the board and supervisors, colleagues, trying to pull this ship forward. It's, I couldn't agree more with the comments that have gone forward. You're absolutely right. I mean, education is the base of everything that we do. In libraries, we're often, the staff and the folks that are doing the work are often seen and not heard. But behind the scene, I don't know if you're noticing out in the audience, looking at my other colleagues, as we're all nodding aggressively and saying, yes, that STEM stuff, that's exciting. The same thing that gets you excited when you're hearing these kids going from one or two saying, yeah, maybe I would consider doing engineering, to all of a sudden, all the hands go up because they see a future and they're excited about it. That's what goes on behind the scenes of the library while we're being quiet up front. And when we get to the next item, my colleague, manager, Maria Clusta of the Creative Learning Department is going to show us some of the examples of what we've been doing. But I just had promised to be brief, but to give you a quick background sketch of who I am so you can know when to call me on the carpet and how to grab me by the short hairs when we're not doing what you expect and need the library to be doing. Again, my background, I'm a professor emeritus now of the University of Nevada Reno. I'm former Nevada State Librarian. And I'm someone that's the product of a family who goes back in this area to before Nevada was a state. So I'm here trying to have the impact and the change that we need here locally. So again, right across the street, anytime you happen to be in the neighborhood, please, just pop in. Happy to buy you a cup of coffee and bend your ear or get my ear bent. Because I'm really, the most exciting things that we have in the offing are the things, in my opinion, that are the product of this collaboration between the municipality and the school district, especially when it comes to our kids and the education going forward. That said, if there are any questions, I'm more than happy to field them. Other than that, I'll step out of the way and let my colleagues do the talking.
You know, just as a kind of acute aside, while I was between board meetings here today, I was out moving around the city a little bit, and I ran into an elderly couple. And turns out that the wife, the wife's half-brother is a descendant of Kit Carson. And her great-grandmother is a survivor of the daughter party. So, you know, I haven't verified all that, but she wouldn't be telling me that unless she do it. But I think, you know, it's one of the things that we see in this community, those good things. And I, you know, so anyway, I just want to let that tell you that there's that kind of, there's those kind of folks in this community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're absolutely right. And I also, I have to throw in one plug on the side note, because even though in libraries, we know that we do a lot more than just check out books, I got to tell you that I just looked at the numbers from last year. This library across the street checked out more books and movies and stuff to the community of Carson City, so much that every man, woman, and child basically had at least four or five things in and out of that library. And it's like, holy comoly. Anyway, sorry, that's it for the sales pitch.
Welcome to the library. Welcome to Carson City. And go. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right. You want us to take up the next agenda item, then?
If you're comfortable with that, Mr. Mayor.
Are we ready for that, folks? Anybody object? All right, I don't hear objections, so let's take up 25 Charlie. This is discussion and presentation on the collaborative programs and efforts between Carson City Library and Carson City School District. I don't know who, is Maria doing this one?
Maria Clusta. Hi, thank you for having me here today. As Todd mentioned, my name's Maria Clusta. I'm the Creative Learning Manager at the library. I am here today to share with you some of the great projects that we've had with the Carson City School District. We really value this partnership. It means a lot to the kids, the students here in the community. We really help to extend the learning experiences that they receive. So I do really want to thank the school district for working with us so much. So to start off, the Carson High School. So we've been forming a partnership with them for a very long time. In fall 2019, though, we began a new project where we actually have a staff member who visits twice a month. And they do a monthly book club as well as a monthly Maker Monday. So each month, she'll bring in several different books so the teens could choose a book if they want to read it and then discuss it the next month. So not all the books are the same, but it really opens up discussion on particular topics. And then for the Maker Mondays, if you want to go to the next slide, she's brought over a lot of different projects. So we've had 3D printing. We've had the MakerBot replicator over there. They watched how a group keychain was made, so that was really exciting. We've also taken over stop-motion animation, so they could actually use a little mini green screen to learn how to create their own video. Super interactive. We've also brought over virtual reality. That's always, of course, really exciting, extending the learning in a different way, where it's a lot more visual. And we've had a total of 60 students participate in those activities so far since the beginning of the school year. We've also done several outreach events at the high school, including attending the open house that they had at the beginning of the school year. We had about 34 students with their families stop by our booth and talk with us about our resources, what we can offer them if they come to the library, things that they had never realized. And I'll talk about those a little bit later if you haven't heard of them before yet. We also attended the Nevada Promise Scholarship Event at WNC. And this is a really great opportunity. So the library does offer volunteer opportunities to teens as well as adults. But for this particular scholarship, they are required to complete a set number of volunteer hours. So it was really nice for us to tell them, hey, you have these opportunities. If you want to come to the library, help us shelf books. Or if you want to help us with programs, if you're creative and want to participate in that, that would be an opportunity as well. And then we have plans to also focus on offering programs regarding the Nevada Career Explorer. If you don't know what that is, it's a database that's funded by the Nevada State Library Archives and Public Records. And basically, it provides people with access to Nevada-based jobs. So they can search for jobs. They can look at occupation profiles. So if they're younger, they're not sure what they want to do. They can also complete self-assessments to get an idea of what their interests are, help field them into potential job opportunities for them to pursue. So we'll be focusing on that. Next one. So we also have the Carson City Library Digitarium space. If you don't know what that is, it's designated for high school students, typically 14- to 17-year-olds. So they can come into this space Monday through Thursday from 2:30 to 6:00. And they can work on homework if they want. They can meet with their friends if they need a safe place to do that. We also offer programs each of those days. So on Mondays, we have movies. We have video games on Tuesdays, board games on Wednesdays. And we also have the virtual reality opportunities on Thursdays. So as you can see, we've had 87 students participate in those specific programs. And for the Digitarium space overall, we've had 513 students come in since the beginning of the school year. So super fantastic turnout. Also, which I didn't mention, we do have freshman PSA visits. So each year, freshman high school students are required to complete a public service announcement project. So they learn about the resources available to them in the Digitarium, which includes MacBooks that have GarageBand, iMovie, so they can edit video, they can edit sound. And it's just very helpful for them for completing this project. And for that, we had 409 students actually come in with their classes and see what we... And for that, we had 409 students actually come in with their classes and see what we had to offer to them, so then they could come back during our regular hours. And one thing I'd also like to mention is that the Digitarium Space is actually run by interns that we get through the high school. So each year, we have the opportunity to host two high school students in our Digitarium Space, and they learn how to check out items, they learn how to help people for the PSA projects, two senior projects potentially, they can provide assistance with using some of the technology that we offer. And then they also learn how to help us with programs, and, you know, those basic soft skills that you would need for future jobs. Continuing on, Carson Middle School, we do, we are going to be attending their event next week, which is the College and Career Expo event. We are going to, there's supposed to be about 467 8th graders attending this event, so it's a way for us to come as a library, we can talk with them about potential volunteer opportunities, we can also showcase the Nevada Career Explorer database to them as well. And we're also going to be promoting the new program that we're offering, which is the JV Library Club, which is a form of TAB, the Teen Advisory Board Program. So we're going to be not recruiting, but encouraging kids if they're interested in becoming more involved with the library, or learning about planning programs, or just wanting to meet other people, they can attend that. We also have done several outreach events at Empire Elementary, which has included a Readers Week, where we've come in and read to the students. They had a Fall Festival, I believe that was in October, where we promoted library services, we reached 140 students with their families at that event. And then upcoming, we'll actually be participating in some of their STEM initiatives coming up, so we will be going to their March 5 STEM Showcase Event, and we'll be bringing virtual reality there. We'll have a star chart experience, which allows them to learn about constellations, planets, space as a whole, very interactive, very exciting, so we're looking forward to that event. And we're also going to be participating in their Science and Technology Festival in April, so we'll be hosting an event at the library. That one, we're really excited about, because we'll have, we'll have a Mars photo booth for them, you know, just something fun, but we'll also have space board games, so there's a planet-to-planet space board game through NASA My Library, which is a grant-funded project that we're participating in, so it's all science-based activities that they can do. We'll also be having strawberry engineering, and we'll have virtual reality again. But lastly, we'll also be doing tours of our Capital Makers Makers Space, which is super exciting, because there's a lot of great equipment in there. So by showing children at a young age the equipment that's available to them, we'll show them growing up as they get older, that they can use this to create really interesting projects. So that will be showcasing our 3D printers, we have a laser cutter engraver, we have even sewing machines in that space, so we'll be showcasing it at that event. Fremont Elementary, again, we had a lot of outreach over there as well. We attended the Fall Festival that they had in September, that was a really fantastic event, saw a lot of new pieces. We had 94 children and their families come, and we gave away books at that event too, because it kind of had a carnival setup, and the children were just so excited about being able to take home a book. So that was a really good event. We also have regular library tour field trips that are scheduled with Fremont, so they'll actually bring their classrooms to the library, we give them a behind-the-scenes view of some of the things that we do. So if you've ever returned a book at the library, we have our little check-in area, so they get to see the behind of how that works. So they get so excited to see how all the gears move, how the books get put into the bins, and that whole process. But they also get the chance to get a library card, they can check out items there, we have a couple other activities, but it's a really great way to show them all the things that are available to them. And then next week, we will be participating in their Reading Week, so we'll be talking to three classrooms of second graders, so we'll be reading with them and sharing more Sealer Elementary School, we'll be participating in their Reading Night as well. If you're wondering why there's so many Reading Nights, there is a Read Across America event, which is March 2 each year, so a lot of, that's why everything kind of falls around February, March for those events.
Something's got to be done about all this reading.
Yeah, right now. So we will be going to that event as well, providing information about the programs. So for elementary school kids, we do have a lot of opportunities, we have our Lego Club, we have a new Makers Club, we have a Girls Who Code Club as well, so we like to promote those at those events. The preschool programs too, so next week we also have a bilingual library tour scheduled, very excited about this. We're expecting to have up to 50 people attend preschoolers with their parents, and a lot of them are Spanish-speaking, so we will have a staff member there who does speak Spanish, and we're going to go over all the different opportunities and resources that we offer, so the programs, the books that they can check out, we'll be getting them set up with library cards, we'll be doing that behind-the-scenes tour where they see the check-in area, and just talking about all of the things that they can do. And then lastly, if you look at the screen, I have a long list of programs, so these are all just additional programs that we host at the library, but if a student at one of the schools wants to attend, extend the learning outside of school, these are some really great opportunities for them. We offer programs for pre-K as well. One program I want to mention is the Family Reading Program, which we partner with the Northern Nevada Literacy Council with. So we do focus on the mind and the making, the seven life skills, essential life skills, so parents can learn how to teach their children to learn at the best capacity as possible, so they're learning how to read at an early age, and they're doing it as a family unit, not just coming to us for us to read to their child, but they're learning how to read to their child at home. And with that program, they get to take a book home to build their home library, and they also, we get STEAM activities that we do with the children as well. Another program I'll point out, we have our Makers Club there too. We did button making last time, so each month, elementary-age students get to learn a different STEM skill. We've also had Paws for Love, which is great for elementary ages. That is an organization out of Reno that brings their therapy dogs, and children can read to the dogs and gain confidence. We've had a couple kids who have really improved their reading because they've had a chance to read to a dog instead of a human, because they get a little nervous about talking in front of other people, but the dog is not going to judge them, so it's a really nice, comfortable environment for that. Yeah, do you guys have any questions?
Lori?
Thank you so much for your presentation. Ken, looking at the Carson High School, where you indicated you had a new program that you started in the fall, and you do a monthly, you go to the library, and you had attendance of 60. Can you explain that a little bit more? Is that an optional thing, that people just happen to be at the library, or there's, and so how do the students access that?
Yeah, so our staff member who goes over there goes over during lunch hour. So it's the kids who actually go to the library during lunch, so it's a voluntary basis, they're not forced to do anything, but we do encourage them to participate if they want to.
And so is the 60, it really dovetails to both questions, is that repetitive, so you've gone once a month, so that's 60 students over eight months, or...
Correct, yes.
So it's just a raw count, not an unduplicated?
Yes, that's everything added together.
Okay, so we want to improve on that, okay. And then, is that the same answer when I look at the Digitarium attendance of 513, so again, it's not an unduplicated?
Right, it's all just from the time frame.
Okay, thank you.
Maria, you want to give us a little idea of what your background is and why you took the job at the library?
So I've been working in libraries for almost 10 years now. I started working in Ohio at the Akron-Somey County Public Library System, and then I got my library degree and wanted to become a professional librarian. I got an opportunity in Wyoming and moved there as an adult services librarian. I worked there for a little over a year in Rollin, so a pretty small community, 15,000 for the entire county, and that was really great experience, but I started wanting to pursue a new job, and then just happened upon a Carson City opening, applied, never been here before, and got the job, so it was super exciting. I actually started here as a librarian in the Access Services Department, and then worked as a librarian in Creative Learning, and now I am the manager for the department.
Thank you. Impressive background. This was you or Diane Baker, Mr. Colgrove there who recruited you, but nice job.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, in the library world, Ohio is kind of considered the mothership, so it's exciting that we're attracting talent from that caliber.
Tell Ohio to stand by, because the mothership is moving west.
That's exactly right. And if I can throw in one other thing, I want to specifically acknowledge the support of the Library Board of Trustees, and the friends of the Carson City Library Organization, who are the ones that are responsible for putting these books in the hands of all of the kids that we're engaging with. They round up a lot of books and make a lot of excitement possible, so if you're keeping track of those numbers, you're right, there are a lot of places where we can improve and keep ramping it up. But even on its face, I look at it and think, that's several thousand kids that we've touched with our increasing staff, and by involving kids from the school district, so by pulling on the same rope, we're starting to make a real dent, so you're absolutely right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I think it's also important to note that in Carson City, there aren't a lot of things to do after school for some teenagers. And so if they're not into dirt biking and hiking and what else, the nature things we have around us, so the library is a nice resource that is there, and so those programs give students with those interests a place to go and pursue that without having to drive into Reno, or, you know, get on the internet and find something outside of our area. So thank you for your services and your support of our students.
Again, if I can extend, anytime you happen to be by, I'd love to show you just a glimpse of some of what we're doing. Some of the slides might, like when you see this Nevada Career Explorer or VR stuff, and how does that fit with a library? When it dovetails with the presentation from Tesla earlier, and when Superintendent Stokes is talking about job shadowing and giving these kids the opportunity to see themselves, I don't know, when I was a little kid, everyone wanted to be a fireman when they grew up, because that was all they saw. In this scenario, they're able to go into virtual reality and actually see themselves in all of these different possibilities, and when we combine that with a tool like the Career Explorer, so that these are real jobs that they might be able to get in a handful of years, and by using library resources and the classroom resources in the school district, get there, it's a huge win. So again, thanks for letting us pull on your rope.
Thank you.
Me? I just want to say, sorry, Lupe.
So we'll go Stacy, and then Lupe, and then Laura?
I just wanted to thank you and your staff, and Diana especially, you guys have been coming to our PLC meetings that we have quarterly, and being part of that, and keeping us on track for our strategic plan, so I did want to thank you for that time, that's not part of your regular library duties, but we've really enjoyed having your input there and helping us get through those.
It's a huge honor, thank you.
I just want to thank you for offering the tours bilingual. I really appreciate you guys making that inclusive for everyone in our community. I know in the Carson City School District, we're doing the same, so it's wonderful to see that the city is also doing that, so thank you.
Just a quick question on the Digitarium, is that available just for the high school students, or is it also available for the middle school students?
Right now, it's only available for high school students.
There's quite a few middle school students that also, I think, would appreciate that, and I love the push-in to the school libraries, because I know school libraries at lunch are a place where a lot of kids go that need a place to go, and is there any desire to look into the two middle schools pushing in at lunch for those as well?
So we definitely want to partner more with the middle schools, that's part of with us creating the JV Library Club, starting that development, but I have worked with the school librarian at Carson Middle School last year to promote literacy over the summer, so I do see us partnering more with them in future.
Thank you, I just had a follow-up. So do we have capacity for expansion at the Digitarium? What I'm trying to get to, is there really like 40 students per session is available? Because I'm picturing the space, and so I'm really looking if we have opportunities for expansion there that could help more students, before we look to expand it to different grade levels, do we even have the capacity?
The space in the Digitarium?
If I could jump in, I would say the answer is, it depends, and really, the secret is in looking at the programs that we're currently doing, not overloading the staff and the space as it is, but there are certainly opportunities for slotting in more, things that Maria doesn't want to hear, but we're actively considering. No, I'm teasing, of course, Maria. And I were talking earlier today, even about Trustee Crossman's question, I mean, how can we, we're reexamining some of our policy, does it make sense to expand slightly? We hadn't considered middle school students, but I think that's a good possibility to explore. So the answer is, done carefully, because right now, I mean, at the end of the day, you've got an amazing engine across the street there in the Carson City Library. I mean, I have never seen a library that's so densely and regularly and heavily used. It's a marvel of efficiency, I mean, there are things that we can do to get a little bit better, but these are just decimal points. And the question is, how can we get more bang for our existing buck without breaking it? And that's exactly what the business we're in. Thank you very much, Supervisor Bragwell. I'm looking over to Supervisor Stokes in case we need to be more careful before we're wading into the middle schools and saying, how can we help more?
For the record, Richard Stokes, Superintendent, we're really pleased to have the library as our partners for as many years as I can remember. You folks have been there to help and support. We know that as your resources and availabilities open up, you'll involve us in those decisions, so I would say, let's just keep working together, and thanks for your service so far, and it's a pleasure to have met you, and look forward to getting to know you better over the years.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is a presentation and discussion of a proposed agreement between the Carson City School District and Carson City continuing the School Resources, Resource Officers Program at the school district, and through which the city and the school district will split the personnel cost of three SROs, approximately $430,438.81 for fiscal year 2021. This is for discussion only, and we have Sheriff Ken Furlong... And we have Sheriff Ken Furlong and Seer and Sergeant Mays. Thanks.
Good evening, for the record, Sheriff Furlong. And I'll kind of start things off. And obviously, to my left, and she'll be giving a short presentation here in a few moments on the progress of the program. Sergeant Mays is our responsible supervisor for the school resource officer programs throughout the school district. He also keeps in real close communications, as we've briefed you before, about our relationship with University of Nevada Reno police officers who are stationed up at the college. So we believe, as I've told you before, that all of our educational institutions are receiving a level of protection, and I'm very, very happy with it. I'm going to give you the Reader's Digest version of how we got here and why we are here tonight. Several years ago, as the staff summary has alluded to, the sheriff's office in conjunction with Mr. Stokes, thank you, entered into a grant agreement where we received federal funds for the staffing of three positions at the schools. Those three positions were shared equally between the school district and the city of Carson. That grant ended just about a year or so ago. I did a little tail on it, but it ended. Shortly, or right about the time you folks shared a joint meeting last in reviewing the memorandum of agreement, it really disclosed that we just had, the lawyeries of it, it couldn't be fixed. It had to be rewritten completely. And along that path, the school district was able to secure funding for two additional officers. That has brought the total up to five officers for our local schools. That's how we got here. And we chose to, for transparency and for awareness, allow this meeting as a discussion item to discuss that memorandum of agreement and present how the school district is doing along with our officers that are assigned to the schools. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ann and let her roll with it.
Thank you, Sheriff Furlong. Board of Trustees, Board of Supervisors, thank you for having us here this evening. I'm pleased to provide this information, update on the status of the school resource officer program. The program, as Sheriff Furlong mentioned, began about five years ago. This is outlined in more detail in your executive summaries. The prior grant funding for the program has expired, and we now have a new source of funding through the state school safety grant program for these two additional officers that have been added to the program. As we enter into the new funding period, we've also taken the opportunity to reflect upon the experiences that we've gained and update the memorandum of understanding to address items such as information sharing, technology, equipment, and further clarifying the roles and responsibilities of the parties to the agreement. These changes were, for the most part, informed by a model policy that was developed by the National Association of School Resource Officers. So after comparing our old MOU with the model that they provide to all of the school districts, following that NASRO model, it just made sense to go ahead and adopt that model language that they provided.
Okay.
So as part of that MOU, to clearly articulate the program objectives of the SRO program, the primary goal of the program being to achieve greater physical and psychological security and safety for the students and employees within the school district through a balanced approach of education enforcement and community relationships. And that is done primarily by reducing the number of incidences of violence and weapons on or at the school property and reducing truancy occurrence rates and juvenile arrests community-wide. The program, as I mentioned, is based on the NASRO model. All of these school resource officers have been through the NASRO basic training program. And I think a few of them have actually been through the advanced program as well. I've had the pleasure of attending the annual NASRO conference with our SROs for the past three years, and that's a great event. We've actually had speakers from that conference come and provide additional training to our threat assessment teams and incorporate them into our emergency operations training programs. So just briefly, the SRO triad concept views the SRO as an informal counselor, an educator, and a law enforcement officer. So they're really serving three roles. And to just more fully explain that, I'd like to share with you an explanation directly from NASRO because I couldn't have said it better myself. So effective SRO program to recognize and utilize that the special training and expertise that law enforcement officers possess that is well-suited to effectively protect and serve the school community. SROs contribute to the safety school, to the safe schools team by ensuring a safe and secure campus, educating students about law-related topics, and mentoring students as counselors and role models. This is the triad model of SRO responsibility. Educator, informal counselor, and law enforcer. Just as it would be difficult to describe all of the tangible and intangible ways an experienced, caring teacher or administrator contributes to his or her school, it is also difficult to inventory all that an SRO can do for a campus and its surrounding community. Law enforcement's specialized knowledge of the law, local and national crime trends and safety threats, people and places in the community, and the local juvenile justice system combine to make them critical members of a school's policymaking teams when it comes to environmental safety planning and facilities management, school safety policy, and emergency response preparedness. Officers' law enforcement knowledge and skills combined with specialized SRO training for their duties in the education setting. This training focuses on the special nature of school campuses, student needs and characteristics, and the educational and custodial interest of school personnel. SROs, as a result, possess a skill set unique among both law enforcement and education personnel that enables SROs to protect the community and the campus while supporting the educational mission. So that's a lot of information about the triad model, but as I said before, I couldn't have said it better myself. So that is an explanation of how NASRO envisions school resource officers working in schools. Okay? So just to give you an example, and this is by no means an exhaustive list of all of the different types of things that our SROs do in our schools, but just to kind of give you a sense of what that looks like to be an informal counselor. Our SROs collaborate with local agencies, local behavioral service agencies. They listen to students' concerns, they provide counseling to victims, and they provide intervention, skills development, and healthy lifestyle programs for classroom instruction. So they're also in the classrooms talking with students. As an educator, they have been very involved in not only educating our students about drug use, including tobacco and vaping, but also coming in to educate our teachers and our counselors and social workers. They've partnered with some of the local dispensaries to just bring the items in and put them out and explain to them what all of these things are and how, what that looks like. They conduct traffic stop education, bullying programs.
What does that mean, traffic stop education? What are we doing there?
That's traffic stops.
So the education part is just tacked on? All right, thanks.
Quite a bit of emphasis placed on safe Internet use and technology, being safe on the Internet and technology awareness, information about domestic violence, how to report, how to get help. Some of this comes to them through Safe Voice as well. And then we have summer day camp programs that are becoming more and more popular every year. Okay? And then on the law enforcement side, that third leg of the stool, we had the Department of Homeland Security send a gentleman, what's called a PSA or Protective Service Advisor, come and do some assessments for the school district. And I invited the SROs to sit in on all of those meetings. And that was just really important to have them involved in that process, to have them understand some of the recommendations that were being made. They continue to be an essential part of our special event action plans, whether that's the Silver Snowflake Festival, graduations, or any type of special events going on in our schools. We typically meet and talk about coverage and where they're going to be controlling traffic and just really working together to provide the security for those special events. Just a general school presence, having their vehicles parked in front of our schools is a law enforcement presence that is visible to the public. And then our Emergency Operations Development Committee. This is a development committee that meets annually to review and update the school district's plans for emergency preparedness. And we have our SROs involved in that committee and providing the feedback, helping us write plans that make sense. Okay, so those are just some examples of what that triad model looks like in practice. Any questions about that? Okay, so I had some fun pictures to share, I wish we had more of them. This is our SRO team currently, Sergeant Mays, Deputy Henneberger, Deputy Adams, Deputy Williams, and Deputy Lopez. And they are all stationed at schools, but they kind of cover each other throughout the schools and work cooperatively. All of our principals know every one of them, and they are a valued part of our team.
So Ann, on top of that, Deputy Williams, did he, he actually started when he first got the grant, right? He's the only one that started?
He's one of the originals, yeah, yeah.
Oh, Jared was too? Okay.
Yeah. This is a shot from our emergency operations planned training that was done back in August at the beginning of the school year. We had all of the SROs and some folks from the fire department there as well providing us Stop the Bleed training. And this is a program called Breakfast with a Hero. This happens several times throughout the school year where we have deputies come in, SROs, other folks from the sheriff's department, and they serve breakfast to our kiddos at the elementary age. They also have a Thanksgiving with a Hero program, and the kids just love this. And that's just a great shot of Deputy Adams with a little buddy who's got his own badge. And this is just a great example of how we want to create that type of trust with very young students to have them comfortable and trusting with our law enforcement partners. Okay? And that's all I have for you. Any questions?
So we'll go Laura and then the mayor.
So thank you guys very much. So in looking at the agreement, my question really revolves around number eight. That details what's going to be utilized to determine the effectiveness of the program. But I don't see in here is, is this an annual report then that's going to be made to the school district and the city? How is, how are we going to receive this data? So it's summary, obviously, I don't need any individual students' data. But I'm looking even over the last three, four, or five years of implementation, I haven't seen any data at all as to, I hear anecdotally that it's going well and it's great, but where's the actual data?
So the data on the prior grant period was managed by the sheriff's department. So they have that data. They had to provide it to the COPS office, that was a federal grant, and they had to provide quarterly updates and reports on the grant progress. And they would contact the school district, and we would compile all of the numbers and send them over to them. Now, this new grant is going to be managed through our grants department, and we then have to provide those reports to the State Department of Education who has provided the funding for this two-year period. So the information is available.
But would those stats, when you have those stats that we're doing, is that just for the two officers for that grant, or will that include the other three officers too?
It will include all. The officers are very, very engaged. Annually, you hear about things such as the crime rates and arrest data and the circumstances that we address every single year here in this community, and those are all published on the website. This program has been very, very effective. There are times when it adjusts to unique circumstances. And there is reflective data that isn't necessarily directly at the schools. In other words, we choose to do a lot of our work away from the school. And thanks to Mr. Stokes and I communicating very, very well. If, for example, a severe circumstance does come up, we can deal with it at the residence is better than we can on a campus. So there is a lot of data that is not necessarily reflective directly at the school or reportable, but the officers are engaged 24 hours on those incidences. The circumstance of Safe Voice is probably one of the biggest impacts that we have that calls on these officers 24 hours a day. Again, not on the, not necessarily straight on the school campus data network, but certainly within the community standards.
And I think when you're looking at stats too, though, Laura, you have to look, when we look at, when we have our report card and stuff, we come out with the bullying and stuff. But it looks like we're up, but because these are up is because they have gotten a relationship with these kids now. So the kids are coming to them and telling them, this kid's got a gun, or this kid's getting bullied. So it's getting reported more, so it looks like it's, the stats are higher than they were before we got the SROs. But it's because we're now more actively engaged with the kids in the community that they're getting it on the ground floor, we're not having as many major events. And if we are, we're getting there a lot sooner than we have in the past. But if we look at the stats from our report cards, our bullying is up, but it's because it's being reported more and it's being taken care of more. So I think you got it, when you look at the stats, you kind of have to look at that aspect of it too.
I guess what I'm looking for is, I see someone else in the background at the door over there, and it reminds me with Ally, am I seeing it throughout our entire juvenile system? Am I seeing an impact in lessening those that have to go to probation status because you're able to get to it quickly and to diffuse the situations? And so I'm still, what I'm looking for overall is the effectiveness of the program. By having police officers in the school, are we keeping the community safe? Or are we seeing long-term benefits? And I don't think it's wrong for me to ask for statistics or data to support that we're doing the right thing. This is the right answer. And I hear it, but I'm just looking for data to support that now having five, and I don't know, maybe at some point, the real answer is we should have seven. I don't know that, I'm looking for data to support what we're doing and why we're doing it. And again, am I getting even a side benefit that I have less impact now for the JPO office? That would thrill me to see it throughout our entire system.
Some of the challenges that we face with that is, number one, they're juveniles. So we speak very, very little out publicly about the juvenile direct incidents. We are restricted in much of what takes place. Very often, your most critical incidents, which you never hear about, they're dealt with by these officers away from the schools. I can tell you that the amount of critical incidents that they have responded to just this school year have been substantial. In all of those cases, they were dealt with and able to be resolved at the most lowest level. It does impact juvenile services, these These officers work very, very closely with Juvenile Services, and it has a tremendous amount of impact, especially when we end up having to house a juvenile for a long period of time under the Juvenile Services umbrella. I apologize that, I apologize and compliment that we don't discuss many of these incidents. It's just the laws.
Yeah, and I don't want any specific child information. I don't. But don't you think we should overall be able to see a number that says 52 handguns were discovered at such and such, and that we see that stat declining year after year? I don't know.
Just to be clear, we have not found 52 handguns.
I know. I just thought, we're down to one. We're down to one.
But our school, it is on the school, because the school has to report those things to the Department of Ed. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Stokes, but that type of information, the bullying incidences, those, the disciplinary procedures at each school site are reported at the school. And if I can just take this opportunity to thank all of the SROs, because they work hand-in-hand with our administrators, and I, they make our schools a safer place. They form relationships with the kids. I've got three high schoolers and two elementary kids, and they have relationships, they form relationships with the parents. I've had SROs that have come to PTA meetings to educate parents on some of the things that are out there, whether it's apps on their phones or some of the different drugging, drug paraphernalia stuff that's there. They've come and done that. They are so supportive of the schools, and I just am so grateful that our city has had this opportunity to work with our school district, to put the SROs in place, because I can't ever see going back to not having them, because it is so valuable.
And I think them, along with our social workers that we have in right now, it's a, we have our own triangle going on between the school district, the Sheriff's Department, and our social workers, so that kids that are in distress are getting help a lot faster than I think they were ever before. And I don't think we have a stat that could even show you that.
Well, I think that probably, speaking as a school administrator, the reality is there are instances which pop up at schools every day which school administrators are not trained to deal with. And so having law enforcement as a resource and somebody to say, this is what I have I'm dealing with, and there's so much that, you're right, because of the age of these kids, you never can speak about it. And parents are mad at you because they want to know what happened with blah, blah, blah. Well, I can't speak to you about another child. And so just having that resource in our schools to keep our students and our staff safe and help make sure that we're, you know, keeping our whole school community safe, I think that's invaluable. And I think that the data you're looking for is really hard, because there, I see probation officers in the back who, we've had difficult kids at the middle school, and they had a talk with them, and those kids didn't end up on probation. But that's not data that you're going to report, because as a dean of students, you know where certain kids are heading if they don't turn things around. But pulling in some resources who can kind of do things informally and support the parents in the school and change behaviors before law enforcement gets involved and we are reporting behaviors, that is huge. And so part of it is, in the name of safety, there's the preventive things that we do, which we might not have the number for, but those of us working in the schools know are many, many instances which our professionals are helping us with. And I think that that's, that's one of the challenges. And I think that we have to know that in the name of keeping these kids safe, sometimes we won't have an exact number, but kids aren't a number. You know, there's, there's a lot of things that we deal with which are kind of those gray areas when we're dealing with kids, and probably make Mr. Stokes' hair a little bit extra gray. And, but that's just the reality. And I think that that's the challenge when we look at that. It's a partnership. It's, we would much rather have this all be preventive as opposed to something that we're reporting and talking about in the news.
And I could add for Ms. Bagwell, we do over to juvenile, and communicate with Juvenile Services regularly on that, along with the SROs. That number shouldn't suggest good or bad. It is just a piece of data. Things that reflect good or bad are things like relationships with Partnership Carson City, relationships with our businesses that come in and assist us on the education side, briefing the PT, the different organizations. We run a senior academy out of the high school every year. This year is the largest class we've ever had. In fact, we had to break it in two last night because it's so large. Those are positive things. Those are the positive influences that Anne was talking about. You're building relationships with kids. We look at Safe Voice, and I'll tell you, Richard, to chime right in with me, Safe Voice is a real challenge for us. But it's also an indicator that rise in the level of student trust amongst the school district and the law enforcement that's there, and how rapidly we will respond to it. You wouldn't get those if they didn't trust it. And so we look for some of the indicators, not to be the number on the page, but the result-oriented. And I'm very, very happy with the relationships that are being built. And I apologize to Mr. Stokes for waking him up at all hours of the day and night. But you know, the school district has valuable information for the Sheriff's Office as well. And so that relationship has to be strong as well. And that's another indicator of the success of the program.
I just want to reiterate what I heard, I don't know if it was, but I want to thank everybody. I think, I think the SRO program for the school district's invaluable. Mr. Stokes does do a state-of-the-district address to us as school trustees, and we talk about generalities, you know, we're not going to get into specifics, but these are some of the things we see, the number of bullying cases at the high school, the middle school level, things like that. We have that information, but just in terms of what's being done with the SROs and the program in general, I think the safety and the response is important, but what, for me, and I think I've said this before, is that interaction. I was a person as a kid who grew up in a family that had police officers, aunts, uncles, a grandparent. So I knew some of those folks personally. A lot of kids don't experience that. They see police officers on the side of the road with the lights going on, or they know somebody who got in trouble, or they hear something on the news. The interaction we have with SROs in the schools provides that relationship, and it shows them that, you know, these are people, just like we're all people, doing a job, but they're there for you, they're there to help you. But that interaction I see, especially at the high school with the officer that's there, the way he interacts with the kids, they love him. They, you know, he pops his head in, he makes it, he makes it lighthearted when it needs to be lighthearted. And my daughter, who now graduated, you know, told me I didn't know him well, but every time I saw him, he was friendly, he would ask me how I was doing. And that relationship is invaluable, and a lot of kids don't get that without a program. So among everything else, you add to that program. I think that's really important, and I just wanted to, again, say thank you.
I appreciate it. And if it helps a little bit, I did meet with Clark County School District Police Department just last week down in, where was I, Laughlin. They lauded our program and suggested that our program emulates theirs down there as well. And my suggestion internally to our organizations is that we build a strong statewide, statewide community of school resource officers so that we can dovetail off of each other those things that are going well and those things that sometimes take us sideways.
And maybe if you do that, there's a lot less red tape that you have to go through that you have to do on a city level when you're talking to other departments. So going through the schools, I think, is a great idea to get that information out.
I have a couple of items. First, you know, just listening to the conversation, you know, we all have our jobs to do, and one of the jobs that the board is tasked with is watching the pocketbook. And I hear a lot of anecdotal information here about how great the program is, but if you come to the board and say, you know, is it three resource officers or five resource officers or seven resource officers that's appropriate, and the cost of two officers is $400,000 a year, we're going to look at that, and we're going to want to see some information to back up that request. I mean, there has to be a way, what I don't want to hear is, you can't have any information other than anecdotal. There has to be a way for us to sit down and come up with some parameters that we're allowed to see that are valuable to us and help us make a decision. So if we can work on that, that would be really helpful to us at the board level. And we don't live in your world, we're not in the schools, we don't see the relationships. So the anecdotal information is helpful, but speaking for myself...
So specifically, what type of information would...
Well, I think we'd have to sit down and determine that, because I don't know the law, I don't know what you can or can't provide us, but I know that there's got to be some general information, as Lori said, stuff that isn't individual-specific, that's general, that would help us create a baseline that we can compare from year to year so that we can see the effectiveness of the program, directly or indirectly. But anyway, that's that item. The other item that I, that I'd like to ask is that under, in the interlocal agreement under 2D, it references the Sheriff's Office Policy 370. I'd like to ask that that be attached to the interlocal as Exhibit C, just so that it's available.
What is it, repeating?
Under, in the interlocal agreement, Item 2D, it references the Sheriff's Office Policy 370, and I'd like to request that that be attached to the interlocal agreement as Exhibit C, so it's available for people to reference.
Right, it's the arrest policy.
So I'd like to kind of talk about that a little bit. So obviously, our job is law enforcement in the schools. One of the last things we actually want to do is take a kid into custody and take him to jail. Is there going to be times where a juvenile needs to go to jail? Absolutely. But we have multiple options besides taking a child into custody. We can do just an affidavit, send it to the DA's office, let them review it. We can cite the kid, release him back to his parents. We could do nothing. Or we can refer him to juvenile detention or juvenile probation and allow them to make a decision if they want to proceed with criminal charges or just kind of informal-type probation. So...
And do you keep track of that, or at this time, or maybe that's something we need to keep track of, because that sounds like that's the kind of stuff that you guys want to hear about?
Juvenile is keeping, I believe, keeping track of our referrals to them.
We track the number, we track the number of students that, kids, juveniles, that are arrested every month, every month we track that number. Again, back to Juvenile Services, as I said, we track those that are placed on informal and those that are informal, and the number of times that the officers are responding to incidents in our schools. For example, in January of this year, they responded to 313 incidents in our schools. That's just one example from, from our, overall, from a citywide perspective, our juveniles, 305 juveniles were arrested last year in 2019. That compared to 254 of the previous year. Why that's significant is we're able to track some source of reasons why, and when and how these occurrences are taking place. We know that in October of this year, we hit a spike, where the amount of juvenile incidences in our schools nearly doubled in one month. That number has been declining since October, but the October, November, December timeframe were particularly challenging for our school districts. God love the administrations and the teachers on staff and the counselors, but we hit a rough, hot, rough, rocky road this, this period.
Yeah. Especially right before the winter break, for whatever reason, it was, there was something in the air, and they were restless, and you could, you could, you could, you could feel it walking through the schools. And so I think a big part of that was, was just, I think, just getting the restlessness. And since then, it's calmed down.
Supervisor Bonkowski, if I may, if we go back to the MOU and the objectives stated in the MOU, we're looking at reducing the number of incidents of violence and weapons on or at the school property, and reducing truancy occurrence rates and juvenile arrests community-wide. Those are tangible numbers that we can access, and we can provide that data aggregated. We can find a way to pull that information together, either in partnership with the Sheriff's Office and Juvenile Services and the school district, and we can work together to provide, you know, results on those objectives.
That would be great, and I think at our level, we understand that we need probably three years' worth of data to be able to make any judgments on it.
Sure.
But that would be a great start. At least we can start the process.
Absolutely.
Because I'm sure, as we've heard tonight, that the request for more officers will come at some point in the future. And, thanks, Kenny.
They have become a fabric, part of our fabric. There's no doubt about that. They have become a part of the fabric of our, our school district, and we are just very grateful for the city's continued support of the program. So thank you.
Richard, and then Stacy.
Sheriff, if I'm not mistaken, out of the 300 and some incidents that you reported, I mean, that you responded to, school incidents, you could probably let us know how many were bullying, how many were arson, how many were battery, how many were fights. I'm sure you guys track that type of information. Am I mistaken, or? I know that I always had to track it.
Keep in mind, and the reason my hesitation, I'm not in control of the dissemination of all of this information, so I have to be very careful about how it's disseminated. Does that, does that kind of explain it?
Well, I'm thinking that...
We have asked that, we have, that we receive the Carson City data, such as from Safe Voice, once a year to give us a really good idea how we're headed into the next year and what things we can do better, and how we can focus, and so on and so forth. But we have been asked not to disseminate that information as we go through it.
Okay, I don't quite understand that, but I'm just wondering, without talking about a specific juvenile, or an age even of the juvenile, whatever you want to do, but it seems like that information ought to be tracked of how many different types of crimes that may have occurred, you know, and what you're responding to, so we can kind of get an idea of what, if there is a certain type of problem, if one area is more prevalent than another area, you know, like more fights, or more bullying, or more arsons, or whatever the case may be, more handguns, nice weapons. Do you guys track that? I'll ask again.
Thankfully for the city, yes, we're transing into a new data collection process where more of that information is going to be gathered and made readily available to the public coming off of uniform crime reporting and moving into national incident-based reporting systems that will collect much more of that data. That, along with the school district and Juvenile Services, I think we should be able to provide you with an annual report that will summarize, as Brad said, that will summarize really good, solid information for you.
Okay, I had one more thing if I could. Thank you. During the summer months, what are the SROs going to do?
The SROs remain active year-round, even during breaks such as your Christmas break, your mid-years and so on. They remain active year-round, and when they're not physically at the schools, they still remain available to address all of the juvenile issues that we respond to.
So if there's any special events, they would respond, or they'd be there during those special events during the summer?
They are available throughout the summer for summer programs throughout, that the school district has. They work with Juvenile Services throughout the summer, working with programs such as the Wilderness Program. the Wilderness Program. They do most of their training during the summer. It's also a period of time when they typically take time off.
Thank you. I'd just like to also say that I support the program. I think it's an important program. The days that we live in now, I think it's required almost. I think we would not be living up to our duties if we didn't have a program like this.
You know, I think, I understand your reluctance to report some of the categories, specifically if they're categories that don't occur that often, because it is discernible through certain means to determine, for instance, if you had an arson case, it was severe enough that it caused a big enough issue, and you only had one in the course of the year and you disclose that, it would be easy to discern who that student was. So I, and I don't want that. I think there should be a way to categorize it. A lot, you know, maybe along the ways of the uniform crime reporting or something, just major categories, I think that's all we're looking for. I'd also encourage you to find a way, and this is a challenge, and I admit that it's a challenge for you, but I don't think we only want to hear the bad crap, pardon my French, but I think we want to hear the good stuff. And so I would really encourage you, if you could, to find a way to report the good that's coming out of this. And I get that it's an intangible and it's really going to be hard to do, but I think we're really missing the boat if you're only giving us the bad stuff and you're ignoring the good stuff that's happening because we have SROs in the school. So I'd really challenge you, and I know it's a challenge, I get that, to find a creative way to measure that, because I think it's, good news is good to report on as well.
I couldn't appreciate that more. I really do agree with you, and perhaps as the Board, Board of Supervisors is aware, we've taken on a few challenges that require annual reporting now. And this is, this SRO program has matured well enough to where we should be able to do that. With a somewhat of a target or a focus on your joint board meetings, I would suggest at the summertime periods of the years, it's something that I work with City Hall and the mayor on, reporting at this point in the year, in the middle of the school year, just seems a little awkward.
One other comment on the, on the Appendix A, I just, I would like to see a little more definition on personnel costs. I think it's a little loose. I think you could tighten that up a smidge. And Sheriff, I just, I want to ask you that, you know, obviously, in a large-scale event, the full resources of the city would, would be brought to bear on that incident, whether it be police, fire, public works, law enforcement. Do you feel comfortable that this agreement doesn't tie your hand? Should the reverse be true, that you could pull an SRO if that need arises to provide community safety somewhere else in the event of a disaster? I just want to make sure our hands aren't tied to the extent that, you know, Rome is burning and the SROs can't leave the school.
No, the SROs can leave the schools, but and giving great credit to our business managers on both sides, we make every attempt in the world to be able to assure that we identify what hours are being spent directly related to the schools or what hours are spent elsewhere.
Right.
If, in fact, just straight to that point, very recently, we have made it very clear if a SRO takes on a function that is community-based, then they have to separate those hours in our, in our hourly reporting systems so that they're not charged over to the schools.
I just wanted to make sure that the agreement's written such a way so that you're, you're comfortable with that, so that if there's an incident across the street from Carson Middle School, that, you know, he can't walk across the street and deal with it.
I am very, very comfortable.
So, thank you.
Public safety's come a long ways at recognizing and understanding that.
Thank you.
Just one more comment. Last, last week's board meeting, we had some sobering, sobering statistics brought to us by our social workers on the suicide prevention and the suicide referrals within our school district just since August 19th. And I think for positive, in a roundabout positive feedback, between the SROs, the social workers and our school staff and the training that they've had, Carson City had zero successful suicide attempts. So no, that is, that is the positive that comes from this, is that we're, we're getting interventions to the kids sooner, they're getting referrals, and we haven't had that tragedy occur in our schools. So there you go.
A couple of questions. Would the School District be funding these positions without a grant? Or its share? Let me put it like that. Would you be doing that?
The grant helps significantly.
Pardon me?
The grant helps significantly. We are grateful for our relationship with Mr. Furlong and his staff. I don't want to belabor the last little discussion that we've had, but we don't involve the, the SROs in every student disciplinary event, but we keep that record. In fact, we're required to report it annually to the state, and we'd be happy to bring that information back. And Sheriff Furlong and I can talk about maybe what are some of the other conditions or situations that we might be able to bring back to this body at our next meeting and over time, amass that body of information, that body of knowledge. As far as the, the, would we have SROs in our schools without the grant? I mean, that certainly gets us started, and we would all recognize the benefit that it is not only to the actual safety, but to the peace of mind of staff and students. So I would say that, given our most recent experience, if we didn't have the help of the city, I think we would have to look at providing some kind of an additional safety and security measure from our perspective.
Well, Richard, you know that. One of the things we, you know, both jurisdictions here, both, both Boards deal with is when you get grant applications in and you hire people to do grant, or you shift people to do grant work, and the grant goes away, you know, you often hear, well, the grant, you know, we should continue to fund it. And that's one of the ones where, you know, I think we've all been careful, tried to be careful about that over the years. But, you know, the real question to me, and I know I've talked to Ally Banister back, back there about this, is, you know, if it's an important program to do, it should be budgeted. Budgeted, not just budgeted grant, but budgeted through the, through the normal process and say, you know, this is what we're doing for, you know, this is what we're paying for, and this is why it's important. So, you know, keep that in mind when you come back with, all of you, when you come back. Sheriff, yeah, go.
And I would point out and clarify for especially the public and those that are watching us, of the five positions, only two of those are on a grant. The other three are already funded through the School District and through the Board of Supervisors, general fund allocations. If, in some world, if the funding of the current grant that was obtained by the School District were to go away, and we were to incorporate, and I'm envisioning, those other two officers into the same scheme that the original three are in, that would equate to each side of the house picking up one body, one FTE.
Well, you know, I think it's important that we recognize that, as Chief Chomi said, the Supervisor Chomi said, is that, you know, that there are intangibles associated with, with having police officers in uniform in the school system. And personally, I think that's important. And personally, I would probably vote to put it as a budget item, whether I would go along with, you know, adding the, as a grant matter, because I think that that, for me, those are the, that's the decision-making process, is if it's important enough to have, we ought to budget it. And if we don't have the money, then we don't have the money. But let me ask this question. What does NASRO say about reporting statistics? Or do they?
Pardon me, Mayor Cromwell. NASRO has guidelines on what should be reported, and again, we go back to the Memorandum of Understanding, which is a model agreement provided by NASRO, and they're looking at the measurable items as the number of incidents of violence and weapons on the school property and reducing truancy occurrence rates and juvenile arrests community-wide. So those are the measurables, according to NASRO.
Okay. I think we'd like to see some of that, that information. The last comment is, I'll have, and I've said this before, I don't want to have Sheriff Furlong to get him embarrassed, but there was one situation several years ago now that I was involved with, and a close friend of mine was involved with their kids. And the end result of that day, that 24-hour period, the kid was 11 years old, being bullied in school, and he got back in school and he had in his pocket Sheriff Furlong's personal cell phone number. The sheriff said, you know, if you've got problems, call me. You know, that's, that's what happens when people work together. And, you know, there's nothing more important than our kids. And it's, you know, we can't report that there's been a big incident and we stepped in and maybe reduced it, but, you know, we can get a feel for that. And I think what you're hearing here from at least one side of the table is we need to get a little better feel for that, but I think you guys can do that. Okay? And Sheriff, probably save that kid's life.
I tell you, it's, it's everybody working together. It's everybody working together. And, and I apologize on some hesitancies to some data. Many of the things that these, these officers and these counselors and these school administrators are doing, it's just amazing. It's not something that's on the clock or readily available to us. Sometimes these kids are going straight to the, to the trusted mentor, if you will, and that's not always the SRO. Sometimes it's your teacher. And our focus is, is to make that school environment as safe and as pleasurable as possible so that the kids can actually learn and get through life in a most prosperous way. So thank you.
As far as agenda items, you're in the lead.
Thank you. I appreciate it all, and that's why it was, this discussion is very, very helpful to us. What we will try to do for, for the remainder of this school year is format some sort of a briefing that we can, that we can get out to everybody, and as I've done before in the past, kind of target the joint meetings for when we, when we provide that data for you folks. I think that it's important that we focus in on the summer months where we can get a full school year's collected data all together. Okay? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion and update on the draft joint use agreement of facilities between Carson City and the Carson City School District. This is for discussion only. Richard Stokes, Jennifer Budge, and Dan Arp.
Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. I know we're getting kind of late, so we'll try to be brief on this one for you so you can go into your other items. Back in June, we had just a preliminary discussion about the joint use agreement that we've had since the 80s between the city and the school district. What we did, Dan and I worked to compile all of your comments. We have also met sort of on a, just a lower-level staff level with the school district to figure out what the needs were. We put together, we didn't want to provide you with a red line of the former agreement, it would have been a hot mess. So we just tried to give you some preliminary roles and responsibilities, to see what you guys thought. And then if you wanted to provide us any direction tonight, we can go back and work with the school district, the DA's office, and our legal teams to kind of refine that information and put it into a draft agreement for your review. Some of the things we heard previously were providing the emergency response. Some of our locations, like the community center here, is a proposed parent reunification site that's really needed for the school district. Also in turn, you know, we might need a community-wide evacuation center at one of the school sites. So we put some, just some general language about that. Also, you know, our recreation needs for the before and after-school programs at the school sites, and then some of the coaches had requested some potential backup locations like at our MAC facility, which wasn't even contemplated in the previous agreement. So we've included that in your packet. We've had some discussion too about the theater and the pool. They're very costly operations, maybe providing some direct cost reimbursement, we could talk about that tonight. School busing was another item that we talked about as well. I know Supervisor Bagwell had requested something from the tennis community about maybe having an opportunity to use the tennis courts at the high school when they're not in use for district purposes outside of school hours. So those are all included in your packet. Did you, we could talk about those items if you have questions, if you're, if they're uncomfortable about anything that we've provided, we're happy to discuss that or remove those items, and then any direction that you want to provide us is welcome.
The list seemed to capture the, the things that I was concerned about, and I think you got a lot of stuff down on your to-do list there. I don't know if you want to get into the weeds on this, but a lot of times in disasters, some facility use is compensable through FEMA, through disaster funds. So it might be worth including some language in there that if there are costs, to the extent that they're reimbursable through disaster funds, that, that the school district can seek those funds through the city. That way, if there's an opportunity to reimburse you, for instance, generally, straight time pay is not, but overtime might be for custodians or for security personnel or something like that. But I think you could write it in such a way that if, that you wouldn't bill us if there weren't, right, if it weren't compensable.
Okay.
Jen, I'd like to get your feedback on, on your comment about the possibility of tracking operational costs. You know, as I think about that, would we be getting into a situation to where the administrative time and cost to track that? At the end of the day, would we just end up trading markers? I mean, is it worth it to track that? Or are we just going to spend a whole lot of time to come back to a neutral point?
I'll try to tackle that one. So for the record, Dan Arp, Recreation Superintendent. For the most part, the tracking's already happening. To get some of this information, I, like Eric Clug, who runs the theater, I just asked him, he already had all the information, and we're not talking about, like, every possible hour that's being used, like custodial, things like that. It's mostly, I think, like, direct costs, like if there's a, a school district event at the theater that requires a theater tech to do light and sound, it's, it's the direct personnel that's being used for that, not necessarily the custodial and every direct cost that could be, but just the ones that are used to support that event and vice versa. If there's something that we do at the school district, you know, it would, it would work both ways.
Do you happen to know, Dan, if, if the trade-off in operational cost is fairly equitable between the two groups, between the school district and the, and the city facilities? Or is it more biased towards one party or the other?
Feel free to step in and correct me, but it seems primarily that it's the school district that would be benefiting primarily. It's mostly the theater, for the most part, that benefits from employees on the city side for that, that tech support, and then occasionally for swim meets, we have to provide lifeguards and things like that for their events. Our primary use that we use the school district facilities for are after-school programming and sports where the school district doesn't have to provide any, any direct staff for that.
I would just add to that, though. We do have our staff onsite for almost all afternoon and evening events, simply because we assign our custodians to work after school is out, say, that swing shift from 2:00 to 10:00. So we do have staff on call.
See no other discussion. Thank you.
We're going to talk about the gun range next, so stand by.
Then if it's okay with you, we'll continue to work with the school district and develop a good, hard draft, and then we can present it to the two boards. a good, hard draft, and then we can present it to the two boards when that's ready, if that's okay.
Mayor, if I could, I probably have a question. Do we know how much money that you're talking about that the school district may owe?
No, but we can go back and we could provide estimates and we can have some staff discussions. I think with some of the items that I listed in here, that before that service was provided, an estimate of the cost would be given. We can always do that, not in a complicated way.
Richard, kind of to answer that, I attended my first park and rec meeting, and they went over the usage and stuff, and they lost almost $450,000 from the theater, from what they brought in for revenues and then the actual cost. And then the pool was the same way. And those are the two places where we have a lot of the usage. So, I think it was just something that we just need to look at and talk about, and, you know, they have to replace seats and stuff too. Is that something maybe we need to look at, being good neighbors and having AJ fine money somewhere for that kind of thing? But it's just a matter of just starting to get that talking points, because I had no idea the costs that were associated with the stuff that we do and that the city is absorbing, you know, $450,000, and that's just on the theater. So, I think it was just a point to bring up so that we're all aware, because if you remember the last MOU, we were paying like 35 cents an hour for tech or something. So, it's just something I think we just needed to bring awareness, because this is something that they've been dealing with. And I had no idea until I took Joe's spot on that park and rec at that last meeting, so.
The other concern I have is, you know, we've got a $2.4 million deficit, and just concerned where we'd get the money.
So, sorry, I had to step away for a moment, but I think one of the other things at the Park and Rec Commission that we were recognizing is probably all of our budgets are in the same shape, right? But one of the things we've been working at the city level, I don't know, I think Brad and I have been a, maybe five-year-now champion of trying to recover dollars for our assets. And so, we talked about creating a 10% portion of our fees to go to asset recovery. And even if it's something we don't end up being able to charge you for, it still should be identified and tracked as, you know, this is the city's contribution even to the children in the schools. So, it's not necessarily saying that you're going to have to pay, it's more that we all recognize what the true cost is, because we have to set our fees for the use of the swimming pool, for the use of the MAC, for the use of all of these things. And we really want the public to understand that we have to start saving to replace the seats, to replace the plaster in the swimming pool, to put in new lockers at the swimming pool. So, we're looking really at identifying all of these areas, and so that's really what prompted a lot of that.
That's understandable.
And I think that when we talk about that deficit too, if we cut some of our, if it ends up we cut programming, that's going to have an effect on the usage at the community center, and they have to be aware of that too. That's why I think these kind of dialogues are real good to have, because if we can't, we can't afford to have our own performing arts at this point, so we're using the city's. But at that same point, if we ended up where we're not even being able to have a theater program or a band program or stuff, you know, that impacts both sides.
Sure. And if we do end up buying 1600 Snyder Avenue, we would have the big auditorium or the big theaters, for lack of a better term, that we maybe will share with the city too.
Well, and I'll just reinforce, we have not made a decision to cut out band or theater or any of those programs, so before we cause mass panic. Thank you so much for the work you're doing on this.
Oh, thank you so much.
So, the next item on the agenda is discussion regarding a formal dedication of Richmond Avenue by the Carson City School District to Carson City and the resulting remnant parcels that will be created by the dedication. And this is for discussion with Dan Stuckey and Corey Klein.
Good evening. Corey Klein, Real Property Manager, Public Works. So, this section of Richmond Avenue runs along the easterly frontage of Carson Middle School. And on the east side of the improved roadway, there's also a parking area for school employees. And it's that parking area that brought it to the city's attention, some questions, and caused some research to be done about improvements or adjustments to the parking and realizing that it's never been offered for dedication to the city. So, since that point, we've had a meeting with school staff, district staff, and discussed an approach to dedicate that right-of-way. And in doing so, we will, the plan is to get the improvements to better align with the right-of-way, such that the city owns where the road is and the school district owns where the parking lot is. You know, we would locate the improvements, prepare a description and exhibit, and do a formal offer of the right-of-way. And once accepted, it would be, do a record or survey and monument it, so it would be very clear, you know, in the real world where everybody owns. And at this point, that is the approach that we're planning on taking.
Can we get the school district to pave Richmond there before we take this up? Yeah, to the street standards that we use something all other surface?
I don't know, AJ sent in our capital projects?
Well, and I know a lot of teachers that park there, so you might have a few emails yourself if they can't park there too.
Well, I guess that's the question, would it impact the ability for the teachers to park there, where they're currently parking?
Well, no, if anything, it will. Currently, everyone, you know, the general thought of the public is that it's all public right-of-way, and that use is occurring. So, when the city is offered just the portion that's the road, the school district will own that whole parking area. So, if anything, it makes it clear, the ability to park there.
And if I could just add my two bits on this, when we first heard from the city that this was a possibility, it seemed to make a lot of sense. And we wanted our property owners that they have their property that butts up to that area where we park. Of course, that really doesn't impact that particular area on the weekends, it's only during school. And so, hopefully, we can be a good neighbor and continue to be a good neighbor to those property owners where they can have full access, if they need it, to their property, the back fence, so to speak. That would be available to them during the school, or during the weekends. There might be some challenges there during the school day, and hopefully, they'll work with us as we work with them.
To that point, that this doesn't bring up any prescriptive use or anything like that, with that, I mean, that's not going to be an issue, right? I mean, there's no easements into that parking area, there's no, as far as you know, I mean, obviously, you have to do title search, but.
Yeah, so, all of our research has not uncovered any easements. And as far as existing rights, you know, if anything, the, both parties' existing rights would seem to be addressed by this, where the rights for the parking, they'll own that, and the rights for the road will now own that when it's all said and done.
I was just talking about the neighbors, as Superintendent Stokes mentioned, that, you know, they have access through their fence, and I just want to make sure there weren't easements, or just doing it as a good neighbor thing, and I applaud him for that. So, that was my question. Thank you.
Have you looked at the east side of the parcel that'll be segregated, that's now been landscaped by the property owners? And if so, can you say what your intent would be for that area?
So, yes. So, as you referenced, when we dedicate this right-of-way, it will create strips on the east side of this right-of-way that the school district will continue to own. One of them is parking, and there is a small area to the southeast corner, that there are two residences there that have landscaped out to the, out to what they believe is, you know, the improved road, out to the right-of-way, what they think. So, the school district, truthfully, would have to decide how they want to address that in the future, because they will still own that. The city will just own the improved road, so will really not be affected by that particular issue in the future.
No, I understand that. I'm talking about the homeowners. So, would the intent be to approach the homeowners to notify them that they are encroaching on school property?
Well, certainly, if not approached ahead of time, they will be well-aware as this process moves forward, because the surveying that will accompany this will cause those monuments to be marked in the field. So, it certainly will start the discussion, even if the right-of-way wasn't being granted at this time. Just a survey of the school's parcel would show that it goes through their front property.
Yeah. I just want to tack on to what Brad's saying. I would appreciate it, because they're in my ward, if you would go knock on that door before a surveyor starts pounding stakes into what they believe is their land. The first they hear of this shouldn't be when they get the notice that we're doing a parcel adjustment. That's all I'm asking. And I think that's all Brad is mentioning. We recently had some issues, as you know, relative to some improvements that we're making where it was a surprise to people. And I'm not faulting the city for that, I'm just saying that I think we should, in this instance, once we discovered an error, we should let them know that they are also in error.
Mr. Stokes, I don't believe the district has an appetite to change what's currently there, correct?
I don't, I don't think it's that, it's more complicated than that. There's liability issues.
Well, and there's always a shortage of parking at the middle school.
Well, and I think that the homeowners need to know that you have the ability to go in and rip out their landscaping, because it's on your property.
That, if it's the parcel that I'm thinking about, some improvements were made there in order to mitigate floodwaters. Is that, am I thinking of the right?
No, it's landscaped with fencing and turf.
And rock, so it's rock on one property and it's turf and fencing on the other.
So, it's not the parcel right on King Street?
No, it's on Richmond.
Okay.
It's the north side of, it's on the north side of Richmond.
I thought it went all the way to King Street there.
West side of Richmond.
Anyway. Okay. Thank you.
I guess my question in general is, what happens if we don't do this? Everything just stays the same? I mean, why do it? What? Yeah, why is the reason that we have to address this instead of leaving it the same?
It's been functioning as a city street, and we would like it to continue functioning as a city street. And so, therefore, we need the right-of-way to do that.
Private road, like we talked about today, and stop traffic from going through there, and then they can bring it up to whatever standard? We've been talking about road standards all day and who owns it and has to do the work, right?
I mean, I know, this is going to come back to the board, I, you know, I don't think we have to debate it here, but I mean, once you find an error like this, in my opinion, it should be fixed, and it should be rectified. And my only comment to Brad's point is that someone have a conversation with those neighbors, because they're plugging along as though life is wonderful and it may not be wonderful for them.
Dan, what do you, once this reverts back to city right-of-way, you know, we're talking about this being, you know, these remnant parcels being, the school district's using them for parking. They don't really meet any kind of parking standard necessarily, it's just room to park. I'm thinking down the road, any kind of liability issues that now we as a school district are going to run into. You know, we have people parking there, and then they move out of that parking spot directly into the street right-of-way to, for ingress and egress. Do we anticipate any issues down the road from the city's perspective, allowing this parking to continue to happen?
Yeah, I wouldn't think so. It's very, I mean, it's very similar to what's going on now out there, other than the city will now own, you know, own the street section. So, it's, it would be two different owners, but in terms of the use, so I wouldn't anticipate, no, I wouldn't.
Any further discussion?
Just for verification, for clarification, so how, where does this go now? Does it go to us for us to decide and then comes back to the board of supervisors, or the board of supervisors decides and then it comes back to us? Or nothing happens?
So, yeah, so city staff will, in coordination with the school district, will plan to work with a consultant to, of course, prepare this offer and do the survey. So, both the school district have to approve that action to authorize that work, as well as the city can, and then we'll work together to bring that to a board for an actual offer of acceptance of the right-of-way.
Who's paying for the consultant?
Well, we haven't made it that far yet. So, we have gone as far to work with our consultant for surveying specifically to obtain a price, so we are readily available to discuss the cost sharing of that.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussion and presentation on the epidemic of vaping and e-cigarette use among young adults, specifically as it relates to Carson City's youth. For discussion only, Nikki Akers and Tony Orr. Hi.
So, for the record, Nikki Aker, Director, Carson City Health and Human Services. And I'm happy to have Tony Orr here. She is our public health nurse, working under the Tobacco Prevention and Control, which also deals with vaping in our area. And so, we are going to let you know the presentations that are happening in the schools around our area. We wanted you to be aware what was being taught to the kids.
My name's Tony Orr, I'm public health nurse. And, start off, so this is the Surgeon General. He recently said that we have an epidemic with our youth, and it's true, I've been in the schools. Go ahead. And one thing more about the public health and the Surgeon General, he's only called, it's only been an epidemic a couple times in the last 50 years, and that's opioids and AIDS. All right? So, we get our numbers from the YRBS, which is the Youth Risk Behavioral Survey. And what we're looking for is trends, and it's not just tobacco or marijuana use or any of that, it's everything, right? All the risks. So, it's done every two years, we're expecting some more data out for 2019. And why do we need it? Because we have programs like mine are grant-funded, so of course, we have to show that we're either making a progress or we need to change our programs.
And then I would just like to add, this morning, we went in front of the board of supervisors, and in the 2019 legislative session, they approved the taxing of vaping products. And the state has awarded us a grant, so you'll see more of these presentations happening, and then some other work with the schools as far as vaping.
All right. So, this is the, our area in Nevada. So, Carson City, as you can see, e-cigarettes ever used is pretty close to 50%. And prevalence is, that's actually a little low, it's higher now, and that's from the 2017 data. However, the 2019 data, I've seen very little of it coming out, they gave us a little preview, and although high school didn't change much, middle school did. It increased, and marijuana, they're vaping marijuana, it went from like 2% to 11%. That's what they're looking at so far in the preliminary data.
For Nevada as a whole or Carson City?
For Nevada as a whole. I haven't seen the breakdown yet, so, but we're expecting it to be on the higher side. This is just tobacco use in general across the nation. It went from, in two years, from 2.1 to 6.2 million youth using tobacco of some sort. Go ahead. So, there's controversy, of course, with everything, there's controversy, it's whether we ban it completely or use it for cessation, there are other countries that do use cessation, and so, there is a lot of studies being So this is a open system. You refill it. This right here, it has a tank, it has coils. They use this for tricks and to get big plumes of aerosol. This is a Juul. If you don't know what a Juul looks like, this is what a Juul looks like. This is the little pod that goes in it. This has nicotine salts. You can get nicotine salts for this, but it gives you a real high power. Okay. So this is the little cartridge. This right here is 59 milligrams of nicotine salt, right here. One mil. That's about, average, is in cigarettes, 20 cigarettes to a pack, 10 puffs. Per cigarette, you get probably about 20 milligrams, and this is one Juul, one ml. It doesn't keep going, it's not combustible, it's on demand. So they only get it when it's, and it's only working, and it's only using the liquid when they're actually using it. This is also, this is a smoke, it's a smock badge. This is the mouthpiece and the pod. This has 50 in it usually, 50 milligrams in it. And this is like, not something that you would think was a smoking device, right? So, go ahead, change. Do you want to? This is the one that also-
They're getting more tobacco? Is that what you're trying to tell us than what they were doing?
They're getting a lot more tobacco when they do this. So when they fill it, and of course, they figure out how to do anything on YouTube, right? They put, when they fill it, they can fill it with either salt or nicotine salt, which is a higher concentration, or they can use something lower, depending on what they can afford. But I've also been told that they've been putting like essential oils mixed, and they're doing a lot of alchemy. They're putting a lot of different items in with their vape. So they, they're getting a lot of really nasty stuff down in their lungs, right? I think we can go ahead and go. So I don't know if you know, but Marlboro bought Juul. They bought 35% of Juul and just tapped the button there. And one more. Yes, because they're actually losing money, right? Because most of the cigarette users are dying off, so, which is terrible to say, but they are. And so they paid $12.8 billion because they want it in the game. I don't think they're very happy right now because there's a lot of lawsuits, but they're still in the game of getting into the e-liquid and the liquid salts. Go ahead. These are what ads look like. So I don't know if you know, but Marble Man was very popular when I was in school, and now we're getting other, where they're advertising the same kind of advertisements. Go ahead. And that's what they look like back to school. That's a Pokemon Go game that is actually advertising a vape. Go ahead.
Which product is the one where you're driving down the road and there's just a smoke storm coming out of the window?
Oh, God. That is probably more like that.
King Chum.
Yeah, like that one. Some of those tanks can be up to like 35 mls, I think. 35 mls, it'll hold 35 mls. So if that's 30 milligrams per ml, that's a lot of nicotine, right? But they give, they give great big plumes of smoke, or like, it's not smoke, it's aerosol.
But the ones you're showing us here, I mean, other than that one, God, I mean, kids aren't doing that in school with that big plume around them.
Actually, they are. They are doing it in school. I was actually given the red one by someone from Carson High. She gave it to me. She pulls it right out of her backpack, and when the kids talk to me, that's, they have the big ones, but they also have the little discreet ones also. And they come in rings and watches and the little hoodie thing, yeah, the string, they have, yes. So they come in all shapes and sizes. So these are celebrity influences. Dora got expelled from high school for vaping in the bathroom. Then you have like Jack Black and Zac Efron and Kristi Milano, who were all on Disney Channel at one point, and then Katy Perry and Johnny Depp. Go ahead. So this was taken right off of YouTube, and this is a kid that is on there all the time for vaping. And right now, he has two Juuls and a sorin drop. So we're talking 59 milligrams for each Juul and 50 milligrams or more for the sorin drop. And that's nicotine salt. And it really isn't going to give him the vapor that he wants, the plume of smoke, because it doesn't do that as much. And he's trying to fill a whole car with just ones that don't give aerosol off. Yeah. And he's got four other kids in the car. The one below it is a girl from vape studio, because now they're doing tricks, right? They're trying to do tricks. So that's her trick right there. She starts it, and that's the end of it. Go ahead. These are other things that they post on the internet that make it, smoke ring tricks, and like, that one looks kind of like a War of the Wizards, right? Well, they think that's cool, and this is what it looks like. And that's all, you know, nicotine. And they come in sweet flavors, so things they're used to seeing. And they're trying to ban the flavors, but I don't know, there's a loophole in that band. And so if it doesn't, if you don't refill it, then you can have your flavors, right? So if it's a throwaway, and that's why you're seeing the ones that look like a Juul, but they're called puffs, and that's why you're seeing those, because they can actually get those in the flavors.
What is that? Did you, was that about the executive order the president signed?
About the flavors?
Yeah.
Yeah. And the T21.
Flavors are allowed now under that executive order, but nothing else is? Is that the status of the law?
Right. So the ones that, the devices that you throw away, the throwaway ones that are supposed to be one-time use, are still allowed to have flavoring, but the other ones are not supposed to.
Refillables can.
The refillables can have flavoring, and so they're buying them in the boxes.
What's the logic behind that? Smoking is smoking. If it's one-time use or refillable, smoking is smoking. So I don't get it.
Yeah, I think it's the way it's worded, I guess, but that's what they're doing now. They found a loophole. The kids find loopholes in everything. You guys know that. You know, so do adults. Yes, go ahead.
Well, and if I can just add, you know, this, so the executive order that the president signed, he had Juul working with him.
Yeah.
So Tony's actually on, it's NTPC, which is Nevada Tobacco Prevention Coalition, and they're looking at all of this. And Nevada, us as a local health authority in Nevada and the other health departments or districts, we're looking at exactly what that says, and how do we move forward in Nevada for T21 or Tobacco 21 and getting, you know, looking at some of these loopholes and seeing what we can do about it? What's the right language that we need?
What happens from the school district's side of things when a teacher finds that someone's smoking in their classroom, blowing out one of those big clouds? What do they do?
Well.
Well, we just, we just met with the counselors, the, all the secondary schools, and that was an issue with them.
If they are caught on campus doing that, it's handled administratively within the school district.
Who gets the unit, though, the smoking unit? Does the school district confiscate that?
We confiscated four today.
Thanks, okay.
Because I bet they bought one an hour and a half after they got out of school.
Use those things. You ought to see Kenny's trunk.
We're always looking for the new devices.
And so, as you can imagine, 85% of teens who started using vaping products, they started with a flavored nicotine. And then there's cigarettes, and then there's other tobacco products. Other tobacco products is anything else. That's hookah and cigarettos, little mints. They have Listerine tabs that you can do. And then, of course, the, any vaping products are considered other tobacco products. Go ahead. And chew. And they come, you can buy them with adornments, and in any superhero, you can actually get it in anything. I mean, they have Harry Potter and, you know, like Doctor Who, and they have everybody. And you can buy skins, they call them skins, and they wrap around the Juuls. And that's a, the top right is a picture of one of the hoodies that they can use, and the bottom right is a picture of one of the watches. And then, of course, there's a couple pens up there, too. In a vape cloud, it's nicotine, carcinogens, they have all the formaldehydes, adohydes, benzene, which is, causes leukemia. What happens is they've tested a lot of the actual e-juice, and it doesn't have all these things in it until it's heated in the coils. And some of those coils get hot enough to actually burn meth. They have eight coils versus, you know, two or one or...
Tony, I was just going to ask you that. I mean, I remember 10, 15 years ago, we had this, we had, you know, meetings about the meth epidemic in town and how it was growing. Is, I mean, this is now the new popular thing, but I mean, are we still seeing a growth there, too? Is this, has this caused a reduction in that? Are they both, plenty idiots to go around for both? How does it work?
Feeling my thunder for tomorrow. There are some suggestions that the meth market is becoming more aggressively pushing out. The demand could be suggested as being somewhat lower. Prices are coming down, and that's very often in the business world. One could interpret that as supply-demand and looking for more lucrative markets, and the vaping systems play into that.
Does that work?
But you're also seeing more access to marijuana, and where their, marijuana is actually easier for them to get than tobacco. So, yeah, give one to the other. So this is just a little line that shows you cigarettes, peaks, nicotine salt, and then freebase, they do more of it because it goes out of their system faster and is not as efficient as the nicotine salt. Go ahead. So this is the nicotine cycle. You take one puff of either a cigarette or a vapor. It goes into your lungs less than 10 seconds. It goes to your brain. You release dopamine, and you also release norepinephrine, that kind of makes you more alert and everything. So dopamine makes you happy. You feel pleasure. Anxiety goes down, you normalize, you start to fall, you start craving it, and then you take another puff. That is the cycle of addiction of any addiction. That's not just. So fine particles. There's also been lead, tin, nickel found in the aerosol. And that's because it rips the side of the device, and it actually goes into your lungs. Then there's the small particles that are really bad for asthma to be around. Nicotine is a poisonous substance, so if it gets on your hands, you've got to wash your hands right away. In higher concentrations, it can actually make you sick, and babies, it can be fatal. It's bad for the fetus. Even in small amounts, it primes the brain, so their brains aren't developed until they're 25. And so it changes the chemistry of their brain. It changes the way they release dopamine. It changes how they feel pleasure. They have to have the vape in order to feel pleasure. They don't feel pleasure when they do a run anymore. Now they have to vape, and that's why a lot of them start vaping more and more because they don't release dopamine the same way. And that also is a problem with antidepressant, because the same drugs don't work on them. So like we talked about, the babies and the toddlers, and then we already talked about the heating process. One other thing about nicotine is that it's hard to concentrate. You become ADHD, so hyperactive attention deficit disorder, so you have a harder time paying attention in class. So nicotine affects all the body systems. Every single one of them is affected by nicotine. And I'm not going to go through all those for you. Okay. These are the signs and symptoms of overdose. You can overdose. It usually gives you nausea and vomiting, makes you feel really bad, but it can also raise your blood pressure, give you heart palpitations, dizziness, and cause seizures. And they've actually had three seizures that were transported, I think, from Carson that maybe was related to that. Versus signs of withdrawal, which makes you feel bad. You start sweating, you want to crawl out of your skin. It's not going to kill you to withdraw from tobacco, but you are going to feel like it will. It also makes you very moody, and so these kids are using a lot of nicotine, and when they don't do it in an hour, because they're vaping all day and they're waking up at night, and some of them are telling me that they're vaping at night also, that they're waking up and vaping, they're going through big mood swings, and they don't always see it. It's their family that sees it. It's their friends that see it. And so they get a lot of mood swings going on. They're also adding other products, like we talked about. They're doing alchemy, so they're just mixing things. And I don't know if you know what the spice or the K2 liquid is, but they used to sell it over $7.11, and it was for incense, and it's not meant for human consumption, but the kids are like, they do those kind of things. And then, of course, marijuana, they're mixing, a lot of times they're mixing their tobacco with marijuana. And three times more likely to use marijuana if they're already vaping. And then there's also the explosions that are happening with the device. So because they're using alchemy and they're just mixing whatever in, it's, they're using things in the device that it's not meant for. So it messes with the device in general, and what happens is, is it just heats maybe, I'm told by the manufacturer, it may heat up a little bit more than normal, and then the next time it explodes. And I can't tell you how many presentations I've done where I walked in and said, oh, we're talking about them exploding, and they say, oh, yeah, mine did that last night, or mine did that last month, or a week ago, or, yeah. In 2015 to 2017, there were 2,035 explosions reported to the hospitals, and that was only the ones that got hurt. So if they use the wrong charging device, if they put things in it that it doesn't belong, then it has more likely that it will explode. And most of the time, it's in their pocket. Or their purse, or their hand. This is Dan Walker. His device exploded. That's his leg. That's what it looks like. There's a couple of them that I had that I didn't include. They had grafts done to their leg after it exploded in their pocket. Go ahead. And then Nevada quit line, because I ran out of time. I was trying to do... And then we just do policy, T1, T21, End of the Act. Try to change some things around.
Is this a United States problem only, or is it European and worldwide?
My understanding is that it's not as bad in Europe. And they use vaping as a cessation, and they did not allow Juul in because their nicotine content was too high. So if you go to Europe, I haven't been there and I haven't gone to their shop, but my understanding is, is when you go to a shop and you say you don't already smoke, they won't let you buy one. They won't sell the kids. So they do it as just cessation only. And it's a lot lower, and they don't allow the big tanks. They have really regulated their system.
Sheriff, I believe you're still doing the DARE program in schools, and have you incorporated something like this presentation in your DARE program? And have you incorporated something like this presentation in your DARE program?
Yes, it is incorporated into the program.
And Mary, you asked earlier if it's happening in our schools. When I found out the presentation was gonna be tonight, I asked my granddaughter, who's a sixth grader at Carson Middle School, if she sees people vaping in the schools. And she answered yes. And I said, well, where? And she said mainly after school is where she sees it. On school grounds, yes.
Part of the problem is that with some of those devices, they don't produce smoke. And so it could be done right in the presence of teachers if there's no smell, no smoke, you know? They just blow it in their hoodie or whatever and nobody knows unless somebody gets hurt or somebody tells on them.
Right. And a lot of the problem is, is that it smells good. It doesn't smell bad. I mean, if you smell, this one's cookies and cream. Yep, cookies and cream. You know, mango. There's even like unicorn vomit that is supposed to smell pretty good. Like, you know, strawberry, cherry, vanilla. And so it's, there's perfumes that smell just like it and/or soap. So it's very hard to catch. And it's very hard for the teachers because, you know, they'd be policing that all day long in some schools. And they are, yes.
So I guess I can't resist the question. What do our SRO officers do on those things? Were they involved in that?
They were the ones who told me today. They seized four devices a high school student was selling to students on the campus. They just readily admit to it. I think that she's headed on the head. The popularity is so huge in the advertising that it's a real struggle to keep up with. They are making it onto the school grounds. They are making it off the school grounds. It's very, very difficult to detect. When we do find them, when our SROs find them, they do seize them from the kids.
Sheriff, this is a dumb question, but where are they selling these things? That is, are they tobacco shops, 7-Elevens, grocery stores?
Everywhere. There's a lot of, there's a couple places. I think Walgreens and Walmart are now banning them. They're not gonna be selling them. I know CVS isn't, but you can get them on the internet. You can get them, you know, at the grocery stores, the vape shops, the.
Sheriff, because these things are so easy to get, apparently. When the SROs or anybody confiscates these things from kids, I'm curious what the kids' reactions are. Do they know, like when they're selling this stuff? That it, do they even get a sense that it's illegal or wrong? Or are they like, it almost sounds like it's so readily available, it's like throwing somebody a bag of M&amp;M's.
I think, going back to her, I think the fad is so strong right now. And you can look at even the juvenile justice statistics. You'll see that climb in the, in the fad in all of our data that we're collecting. It just corresponds all the way across the country. I was studying states that have no recreational use or medical use of marijuana allowed in those states. And you see the same climb, that same trend climbing. No, I don't think the kids realize, no matter what you tell them.
Well, one of my questions is, you know, when, way back in the day when I was in high school and they were advertising cigarettes in ways that attracted it to kids. Joe Camel and all that other stuff. You know, that was banned, but were those bans just specific to cigarettes and not necessarily nicotine? And so now they're able to make Superman vape devices?
The answer to that is yes. It was just cigarettes. This is a whole different complete ball of wax that we have to go through all this process yet again. And I know that we, they've sent strenuous letters to Juul to get them to stop advertising to kids. And they have stopped, but their original videos were like, party on dude and, you know, come vape. And so now they're doing more like cessation device ones, but it's a little late. And they're still, you know, all over the place. And kids are doing challenges to other kids. And it's scary how much nicotine they're actually using.
But adults are buying them off the internet. Somebody has the credit card and it's not the eight-year-old with the credit card.
Sometimes it is.
Really?
Yeah. Yes. It's, it's not all off the internet either. So they know somebody, you know, they know, they know, you know, cousins or brothers or sisters or they're taking them out of their, one told me they took it out of their mom's purse. You know, they're finding ways.
And it seems more and more there's a market for it. And so the older kids are marketing it to the younger kids and making money for, you know?
So I serve on the NIAA board, too. And we've had two expulsions where they've hit their three strikes. And both of those have been because of vaping. They vape alcohol vape and so they get a three, they do an appeal. And so the one girl that we gave an appeal to, she vaped within three months. This last one, part of the punishment for getting back your eligibility was she has to go talk to every sports program when they're in session. So she's going to the winter sports, spring sports and telling them about the consequences that she's had because of vape. Is there some way that we can incorporate something like that to make, make it more peer-to-peer for people? Because I don't think, because of the advertising and stuff in this epidemic, I just wonder. I mean, we have a ninth grade health class and I know it's covered in there. But to show something that's on their level, because they just don't, I don't think they think about it. But that was one of the things that we did with the NIAA with vaping.
And if I could maybe add to that, we're seeing all kinds of students who have never been in any kind of trouble before, who are coming to some of our student hearings and are facing, because they've either sold or they're distributing to friends, they're facing long-term suspensions. And we have used kind of that idea of restorative justice to have those students go and tell their story to our seventh and eighth grade students and let them know what's at stake, what they could stand to lose. But even those kids who aren't using are being caught with soft cases that might hold a laptop, for example, full of these types of materials. And they are just blatantly selling these and are getting in trouble and are being held to the consequences that we have for use of tobacco products at school.
And to speak to that, with the new grant, one of the deliverables is to identify who may be an influencer. So, you know, we're gonna come up with a mechanism to try and figure out, who are these influencers? Is it a kid in school? Is it, you know, a coach? Who's an influencer? And then piggyback on that and try and get the message through them.
And also, you know, I think what we need to make sure that everyone knows is this is like all over social. This is not just like one social group like it used to be. You know, those were the cigarette people that were over there. This is all social. This is the athletes. This is everyone, you know? This is not just certain kids. It's, that's the scary part. And we don't know what's gonna, what it's gonna do to them.
And you're working with these students and educating them. You know, I think that probably because it's tied with cessation of smoking. And then, you know, for years, all you heard people say, well, this is healthy. You know, these are healthy alternatives to smoking cigarettes. And so I think that for some people, that has taken the danger out of it. I mean, we know now it's, it's not healthy. It's not good for you. There are dangers. But the fact is for kids, if they've heard that it's healthy and those kids who really have never been in trouble, never done anything, they're thinking it's, it's not a negative. You know what I mean? It's, how are we educating them on that?
Also, I've been told that, you know, well, the other generations, they did things too. Like they drank and they did this. And this is our generation thing. That's what I've been told. Yeah.
Has, has Nevada had instances and cases of that severe lung disease that they link to vaping?
We have not had it here, but they have had a couple of cases in southern Nevada. Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Tony will be also presenting to your parent night to the parents. So.
The next item on the agenda, discussion and presentation regarding the flu vaccination outreach and partnership between Carson City Health and Human Services and Carson City School District. This is for discussion only. Jeannie Freeman and Nikki Aker.
Good evening, Jeannie Freeman for the record. Nice to be here this evening. I realize I'm between you and bed. You're between me and bed, so I'm gonna get to it. Our school located vaccine program.
Don't feel bad. There's a few things after you.
Okay, I won't feel so bad. Okay, you're between me and dinner. Let's put it that way. Okay. So, school located vaccine program, this is a program that we've been doing with the Carson City School District for a number of years. And I'm here to give you some updates on some of the things that we've been doing. So we've been partnering with Carson and Douglas Schools since 2009. And just this year, we added the Lyon County School District. So they heard about the great things and the great partnerships that were going on through the school nurses. And they asked to come on board and do that with us. As you know, healthy students, they tend to be in school. And that means that they tend to be educated because they're with you more and so, and with your staff more. And because of that, that makes them better prepared for life and everything else that goes with that. Flu and pneumonia combined together are in the top 10 leading causes of death in the United States. It's been that way for a long time. It's not really changing. And yet we see that we have epidemics of flu and we see that we have all kinds of problems. And then it goes up and goes down. Most pediatric deaths or children's deaths from influenza in the United States are among those that are unvaccinated. Unfortunately, in 2017 and 2018, we had over 180 deaths among kids or among those under the age of 18 from the flu. And that was the highest rate that we had seen since the 2009 epidemic that we had with H1N1 flu situation, also known as swine flu at that point in time. The highest, as I said, the highest number of deaths. Rates among flu infection are highest among our kids in schools. Well, if we think about it, they spend a lot of time together. They like to share. They like to cough and share. They like to hold hands. They like to braid each other's hair and, you know, and those kinds of things. And when we share space and we share all of that together, then we tend to also share our germs. And those little wee beasties, they get into our systems and they rub their eyes and then they get sick. School enrollment, as you know, over a fifth of our population is in schools. And that's a huge amount of people, our young people that are gonna have that contact with one another. If we can vaccinate or if we can help protect as many as we can, vaccination is one of those tools that we use. And it allows us to help protect those who can't be vaccinated. There are different types of vaccines. Some, some people have allergies to eggs and in that medium. And yet usually they can still have the flu vaccine because it's not used with the portion that, it's not used in the situation where they have that allergy. But we also have those who have compromised immune systems. They may have different illnesses that don't allow them to be vaccinated. They may be in households where there's somebody else who has a compromised immune system. But we actually find that if they're in households, we want our kids to be vaccinated because we don't want them to be bringing those germs home and getting those other people sick. We actually had a case this year where we had a grandparent who was very concerned and didn't want their grandchild vaccinated because they said, well, if they're vaccinated, they're gonna bring the flu home and I'm going, I'm undergoing chemotherapy. And we were able to explain to them that the flu vaccine is not a live virus. They're not bringing that home into the home. And they ended up choosing to have that child vaccinated at a later time by healthcare provider when they asked some more questions, but providing some education at the same time. We do find a lot of secondary infections. And as you see, kids tend not to go to school when they have ear infections or they have respiratory illnesses or sinus infections. If their asthma gets out of control, which can happen if they contract the flu. And so we see that more doctor's visits, which is difficult. We find that a lot of those who are getting the vaccines in the school district are those who may not be covered under insurance. And they, it's a service that they don't have to pay for, even if they don't have that insurance. We don't turn anybody away. So we used to call it herd immunity. Most of us don't like to be referred to as an animal that belongs in a herd. So public health thought, let's make it a little more friendly. We'll call it community immunity. This idea that if we're protecting the majority, then more people are protected without even having that vaccination. I don't like to be called as a cow. That's just not a really fond term for myself. When we do our vaccination program, we've become really efficient with what we do. We partner with the school nurses. We have volunteers that are coming in from your PTA, your PTO. We work with our, your admin staff. We've got this great partnership that's in place. And we find that we're able to get an entire classroom in and out in about 10 minutes. 10 to 12 minutes, we're able to get an entire class, whoever signed up for the vaccine in that time. That's a lot less time for them to be out of class than if their parents had to go make an appointment, come get them out of school, take them to the doctor and then bring them back. And parents don't have to leave work or something like that. That would, you know, be a conflict for them as well. So we find that more students are reached by being able to provide this in the school district. And it decreases absenteeism. And that's information that we've received from your school nurses. I don't have the data in front of me. I'm learning my lessons as I come to these meetings to make sure I have my data more in front of me. Next year I'll have that. But your school nurses, but your school nurses are definitely telling us that those kids that are vaccinated are not being absent as much from school. And then if they're in school, improve test scores, right? That's part of what we're looking to.
And well, now, because of the way they count the days or the absenteeism, if you take them out, they're absent the whole day.
Right.
Even if it's only an hour.
And that counts against our star rating. So this is, it's beneficial both ways.
So to be able to have them just out of a classroom for 10 minutes, which is about the amount of time they might use to go to the bathroom or something like that is, you know, one of those things. So what we do have data-wise for you is that five out of 10 Carson City residents as a whole are vaccinated against the flu when it comes to this. And we look at our role at Carson City Health and Human Services as a partnership with other entities that provide vaccines. So we're not looking to compete against a healthcare provider or against a pharmacy or anything like that. We're looking at, how are we doing this as a community, right? We're just another entity that's helping support that. And you can see that Carson City Health and Human Services provides about 14% of the total vaccinations in Carson City when it comes to the flu. That's a significant portion. We're a small entity and most people aren't driving by. We don't have a sign out front that says, you know, free flu vaccines if you have your insurance card, you know, and stuff like that. Or get a free gift card to our store if you do it here. But what's important to know is that 58.2% of Carson City school children are vaccinated by the, for the flu from some provider. It's almost six out of 10. We really want that number to be closer to eight out of 10, for us to really have that community immunity, if not even closer to the nine out of 10. Because that's where then we have those other vulnerable populations that we want to be able to protect. While the number has been declining since 2009, so 2009 is when we had the H1N1. It's a big pandemic. Everybody gets concerned about it. We see other things in the news. I'm not gonna say the word right now that people get concerned about. And so it draws a lot of attention. But then when it's not as much of an issue, it kind of wanes with that. Well, what we find is that even though the numbers have been decreasing in the school district, you know, I can look at the number of actual vaccines. We're seeing that between 15 and 15.4% of Carson City School District students are being vaccinated through Carson City Health and Human Services each year. So the percentage is staying about the same. So if you were to look at your number of students and how it ebbs and flows with enrollment, we're seeing that same kind of thing with the number of vaccines. What we have found is that we have worked closely with the schools, even more so in the last three years. And we have had a couple of schools that have really stepped up to become model programs. And we find that with Empire Elementary School and Boarder Witchberry Elementary School. Both of them have really shown and have been. really shown and have been utilized by other schools to say, "Hey, how are you doing this? How is this working? How are you getting parents involved? How are you getting volunteers involved? How are you getting the word out?" Because they've done a lot of effort to get that information out to their constituents, their parents, and their children, and so forth, to make sure that it goes home and so forth. Keep in mind, we actually have vaccinated kids on Halloween. It seems like such a horrible day. You know, it's a day of treats and costumes, and we're like, "Hey, roll up your Superman sleeve. We're just gonna give you a little poke, but we've got a great Band-Aid for you." But they're, they're brave. And what's interesting is that the high school students are way more scared about a vaccine. The kindergartners come in, and they just wanna look at their friends, and then they don't cry, and they walk out, and it's the third, fourth, and fifth graders that are crying, and the high schoolers don't wanna come in, and they'll, they'll come in and they'll look at us, and then they leave, and then they come back. It's like this interesting dynamic that's there. But these two schools, in the last three years, have gone from schools that have been really challenging for us to work with, to really model programs, and we're so appreciative for the, all the work that they do. We wanna make sure that they're, they're recognized for that. Some of the challenges that we have is that we still struggle with having volunteers. So, sometimes, we don't have a volunteer who knows the school, at the school, and it takes us longer to vaccinate the kids because now you're sending one of us with an ID tag to try to find a classroom. I have no idea what the layout is of your schools. I'm confused. I'm asking a kid, "Can you tell me where this room is?" And they're like, "Yes, just down there." And I, I don't, I don't really know where I'm going. So, I could admit where my flaws are, and that's one of them, a map challenge. And so, when we look at that, having those volunteers is really important for us. We need an appropriate space at some of the schools. Sometimes, we're doing vaccines out in the hallway. Well, if you get one young person who tears up a little bit, it's pandemonium for anybody else who's walking down the hall, and they know it's coming later, and then they don't wanna go there. And so, to have a private space, I mean, most of us don't like getting our shots out in the open either, so it's important for us to kind of have some privacy for those young people, too. And we've got great stuffed animals. They love to hug the stuffed animals. We've got great games we play with them about blowing out birthday candles and all kinds of stuff like that, and most of the kids are like, "That didn't even hurt," you know, so they feel like superheroes and stuff, which is great. Greater school nurse involvement, and this is a challenge because we know how worked the, the nurses are. They've got a lot of specific med plans that they have to work through with students, and they've got other things that they're following up on. But we do need some of that involvement because they know those children best. They know those families best. They're a resource at that institution. So, sometimes, what we struggle with is we show up at a school, and the information isn't filled out on the form. And if it's not filled out, then we can't, we can't be authorized to give that shot. If it's not, if the sign, the form's not signed by the parent or guardian, we don't, we can't give it to them. It's just legally not one of our things that we can do. So, we need some help from the, some of the school nurses to make sure that the forms are complete before we come, so that we aren't trying to track a parent down somewhere at work and interfering with what it is that we're trying to prevent in the first place. And then, we need to make sure that we're doing better communications, both through our agency and through the schools before the event, especially if we're at a school on a Monday. They just may not remember, right? So, getting those messages out, either through that call system that the schools use, but getting the reminders out and stuff that we're gonna be there and so forth. And then, ensuring that a form goes home with every student. We have had some reports where parents and students have said they haven't gotten the forms. They haven't gone home. Either, it was a, "Hey, pick one up if you want on the way. Guess who doesn't pick them up on the way?" The kid's not gonna be like, "Yes, Mom, please, sign me up for a shot at school in front of all my friends. That's what I'm really looking forward to." So, we wanna make sure that those forms go home. It's not an optional item, but more is something that needs to go home with that. So, we're trying to work with some of the school staff to figure out how we can better do that. We see that high school students and middle school students are very savvy at not having some of those forms make it home. Our goal ultimately, regardless of who the provider is, whether it's Carson City Health and Human Services, it's a pharmacy, it's a medical care provider, wherever they get it, our goal is to have at least 80% vaccinated by any provider. We do a report every year as part of what we do for our accreditation and reaccreditation status for the Health Department, to kind of look at, what are we doing as part of our answering of who has access, where is that access coming from, and then where are they getting their vaccinations from? These are just some pictures of all of us out doing the work. Keep in mind that through the different school districts, the three school districts, and the other community events we do, we did 62 events total in the month of October. So, we were working very, we were very busy, but smiles on our faces, hugging our stuffed animals. And then, if you have questions after tonight that I can't answer, or if you have them as they come up, feel free to contact any of us. Tony, who was here talking to you about the pleasurable experiences of vaping products, I have no show and tell items. Sorry, I did not bring flu virus for you tonight, but, you're welcome. But you're, you're free to contact my colleague, Carrie Rio, myself, or Tony, if you have any questions. But I can answer some for you now, if you have them.
So, just interesting that you talk about the phone system that the school district can use. So, is the vaccination form on the school district site so that if you made a phone call on Monday reminding all the parents that, da-da-da, you know, Wednesday's shot day, have your form that they could pull it off and fill it in in case the lovely student decided not to deliver it to mommy or daddy-
Yes.
And send it with them. So, I just question if it's on your website that the parent could pull it down, print it, and do it. Just to, trying to find every single way to encourage them to get their-
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Cortez has indicated that, yes, we do have that.
Yes. So, I, it was on the district website, and each school put it on their website as well. And then, we create the flyer that gives the date of where we're gonna be at each school, because we do have sometimes a child that will be sick. And if they're sick, then sometimes they'll, you'll see the parent who will come and grab them real quick and take them to the school that's as close to them, and then come back and stuff. And so, and each school has the ability to open it up to family members if they want to. Sometimes, we'll have a school that will allow, you know, younger siblings and parents to come in. We won't, we prepare for that. So, we're ready for that, and we vaccinate school district staff at the same time. Everything from your food service staff to the teachers and the principals and that type of thing. And so, it's great.
I, I went to Carson City Schools, and I remember it, oh, it was Corbett Elementary back then, but we all just had the, like, classroom number one, your turn, and we all filed out, and everybody got a shot. So, we don't do, I'm just, I don't understand. Why isn't it that way still? And you went to the nurse's office, and it was just, "You're next," and, so I guess, I'm just concerned-
It's all optional.
The vaccinations has declined greatly versus that was just what we did.
Well, influenza vaccination isn't one of those CDC needed-for-school enrollment kind of things. So, it's truly one of those optional vaccinations, but it is one of those ones that we find it helps prevent the flu, and if, if somebody does still get the flu, then it tends to make it less severe than if they were to have it. Yeah. Yeah. Yes, sir. Oh, sorry.
You know, with the, with the forms being available on electronically and whatnot, is it legal to allow electronic signatures for parents? You know, so, you know, you bring it home, you sign it, you gotta get it back, and you were saying a lot of forms don't get signed. Can, are they allowed to do it electronically?
So, I've actually, I've actually been in contact with our IT department with the city and looking at some of that. We, we don't really have the way to confirm that information, that signature, and so, that makes it really difficult. You might say, "Well, how do you confirm the signature when it comes?" Well, it's coming, goes to home, comes from home. Really, we have some parents who say, I, they'll call and say, "I need to have confirmation that my child had their vaccinations." Tends to happen with our older students. It's not a lot. Okay, well, here's an information release form, you know, can you, so we can confirm that. And we go through, and like, "We don't have a form for yours." Well, I sent it back with them. I don't know what to tell you about that. You can have that conversation with your child. So, sometimes that happens, but rarely. I, I would love to have, I'm sorry, I would love to have the electronic signature, but we just don't have the capability. And a lot of times, what we're getting is because we serve those with Medicaid, we serve those without insurance, we serve those with insurance. We ask them to send in a copy of their insurance card or their Medicaid card, and they do that and so forth. But we do, she's got stuff to say, I can tell. She's urgent about it, too. But we, we do work closely with them as much as we can.
Also, that's where the nurses come in. Because the nurses are able to, when they see that there isn't a signature on there that says it's okay to give the child a shot, but everything else is filled out, then they can call and get a verbal if they need to, or they could email the parent, and then the parent can email them back and say, "Yes, I do want this child to get a flu shot," and they can just attach it.
But the nurse can do that.
But I've made lots of calls on the day of.
But the nurse can do that verification. Myself, who doesn't have a nursing license, I don't have the ability to do that, and I don't have that relationship either with those parents. Like I said, a member of your school leadership and school staff is more connected. Sorry, your question.
I was just gonna comment. I've, I've been a volunteer on the flu shot day a couple times, and it is, it is, it's run very well. The kids, for the most part, are to, they're totally fine. It's like, I think they do better probably than they do with their parents around at the doctor's office. They just go in and they get it done, and I just really appreciate that that is available, and, and I think that we, as a district, could maybe do a better job of encouraging some of these. I'm, I'm just trying to think. I can't remember. I got some flu shot phone calls, but I'm not sure if I got them from all the schools. But that would be, that definitely, we can help with that.
I think two of the biggest steps for us is to make sure that a form goes home with every student, and they, their families have the option to make that decision as to whether or not they want it, and then to make sure that we're having those reminders go home as well.
So, the flu shots usually happen in October? Is that right?
Yes.
So, is that, is there a way that we can include that in that first packet that every parent gets?
So, one of the challenges we've found in the past is we've tried to do that with a couple other districts, where, you know, that first whole flood of sign this, and, you know, you feel like you're pricking your finger as a parent to sign everything. The challenge is, is that a lot of people's insurance actually changes October 1. And so, if they have insurance, and then they fill out the insurance cards, then what happens is when we go, we get that paperwork down the line, and then we're billing their insurance for what, just like they would at their doctors, then they're getting denied, and then we're having, then we're sending bills, and then we're creating confusion. And then, we've had some parents who said, "I didn't sign that form." I'm like, "Okay, we have a copy of it. We can show you that." And they're like, "Well, that was back in August," and they don't remember, you know, doing that. And so, 'cause at that point, they're just signing everything. So, we're trying to make sure that we're as transparent and open and communicative with them as we can be. Sorry, I haven't been meaning to ignore this side of the room, so, it's just- They've had their flu shot.
We're vaccinated.
Okay. I only shared flu with them, not with this side.
Thank you so much for all your-
Thank you.
So, are we needing a biology break? Is, it was suggested we might need a five-minute break? Okay. So, the good news is, the next, we have, the next two items are Mr. Stokes' and- Okay. I tried, Mr. Mayor.
I already did.
So, this, Mr. Stokes' information is mostly review, so I think that it'll probably be pretty quick for these presentations. So, Mr. Stokes, the next item is discussion and presentation on a proposed Phase One changes to the middle school attendance zone in the Carson City School District, primarily affecting families residing in the Fremont Elementary School attendance zone, beginning with the fall semester of the 2021 school year, for discussion only.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, Mr. Mayor, members of our combined boards, Richard Stokes, Carson City School District. I have given this presentation a number of times, and so, mostly for the benefit of our friends from the city. Because of growth in the area, we're trying to take those steps that will allow us to manage some of the growth that is occurring. And as such, people wanna know why we're doing this. Well, for the obvious reason that we're trying to make sure that we've got a place for all of our students to attend. There are some conditions that maybe people don't think about, and providing equitable programs is one of those things. If you think about a school, and we're gonna talk specifically about the middle schools, where you've got Carson Middle School on one hand that has 1,260 kids in it versus Eagle Valley Middle School, which has about 650 students, because of the sheer size of one school over the other, there are certain electives that just aren't offered at the smaller school. And so, equity does become an issue. Also, buildings work better when they are operating at a certain efficiency level, and so, efficiency is also a key item along with just student safety. I wanted to show this slide, and if you'll just bear with me for a moment. If you look at each column, which is representing a certain middle school, there is a number that represents the capacity of each building, and you can see that Eagle Valley Middle School has a capacity of about 731, while Carson Middle School was actually built to hold a large number of students, 1,260. If we continue as we are going now, and if you look at the third bullet down in each column, you can see that those numbers begin to change based on the different developments that we have going on in the community. So, without taking any kind of a step, our numbers are starting to get further skewed. So, this is a map of our current elementary school attendance zones. And in particular, what we're trying to do, and the, the reason that I'm speaking to you here today, is we're trying to have our middle schools have a uniform number of students on both sides of the community. So, we're going, we're planning to add square footage onto the middle school at Eagle Valley, and then we're also planning to modify the attendance zones. And through both of those processes, we are intending then to have two middle schools that have a, a uniform number of students, right around 950, when all is said and done. You'll note that the Boarderwick Bray school zone, as it bumps up against the Empire School Zone, there's a large parcel of ground there that is represented by the Lompah Ranch. And so, once growth starts happening there, of course, that's going to impact our schools significantly. And that, that happens in other developments around the community. And so, anything that we do that allows us to maybe modify some of those attendance zones will allow us to more uniformly operate our schools. This is the current middle school zone, and if, I'm gonna kind of toggle between these slides, so you can see which areas are going to be impacted by the change of attendance zones. And so, they are mostly in this, what we're calling Phase One, representing areas belonging currently to Fremont Elementary. And so, we're proposing that the fifth grade students at Fremont Elementary, who are promoting to the sixth grade next year, instead of going to Eagle Val, or, sorry, instead of going to Carson Middle School, they'll be going to Eagle Valley Middle School. Thank you. It's getting late. And of course, we're planning to do some of these things over more than one phase. This is a, the Phase Two of the elementary school attendance zones, and this gives you, again, an idea that we've made some fundamental changes, including areas associated with Lompah Ranch and other developments, so that our school numbers will be uniform as well. So, very quickly, people have asked, "What happens if we have students who are enrolled in Fremont Elementary School already, and now, next year's sixth graders will not be allowed to attend?" We do have a variance policy in the school district where we will work with individual families. We don't wanna separate families because of a change like this. It doesn't make sense to allow a, a family who has an eighth grader at one school and then demand that the, the incoming sixth grader go to another school. So, we, we will work with families through this variance policy, and especially as we change the attendance zones. And just as a, a way of information, letting you know what our intents are, we have already held two community- held two community meetings that have talked about this rezoning process. We've given those who attended an opportunity, a chance to ask questions, to become involved in providing us with ideas or input. Our final meeting is scheduled for the 27th of February, and that will be at the Fremont Elementary School, starting at 5:30. And that meeting will be held in the library. So, we'd like to attend, invite anybody to attend that meeting who might be interested. And then we'll be returning and asking our board for a final vote on the idea on March the 10th. So, that is essentially my presentation. We do know that by expecting additional students to attend the campus over at Eagle Valley Middle School, there will be an impact on traffic and just in general activity around the campus. And we've appreciated our close working relationship with the city and hope they might have some ideas on how we might be able to mitigate any of those transportation issues.
Mr. Stokes, just for clarification, though, how, what year was it that the populate, with all the portables, the population of Eagle Valley Middle School was over 900? That was not too long ago before we removed all of
2003 was when we had the largest number of students in the school district. And at that time, and for about three years after, we had a high number of students that were attending at Eagle Valley Middle School. So, there was a lot of activity in the area there as well. But the feedback that we've received at our community meetings from the neighbors has been around the idea of, you know, how is this going to impact my home and the traffic that we're experiencing in this area?
So, I noticed on there that the residents from Fremont Elementary were notified, but the residents around Eagle Valley were not notified. And the impact, I'm sure there's impact to Fremont also, because those parents are going to see their kids go somewhere they didn't expect them to go. But the impact is to the residents of Eagle Valley, and the traffic is horrendous. You cannot even leave the development. I mean, literally, it's 22 minutes now unless you go all the way around. So, I don't understand, how are you going to mitigate it? I, I under, I do think you're trying to make the right move of equalizing the school, but what are you going to do for the transportation if you're not going to provide buses? Because in the old days, you had buses that took the students there, and you changed it from one mile to two miles. And so, now, the impact is a whole bunch of single-car parents dropping off a student or picking a student up, coming through the roundabout, flipping around and coming out. Well, no one that lives in the development can actually get out on Carson River Road. You're just, that's, just forget it. You're sitting there. So, what do, what's the plan?
So, we will still have our transportation processes in place. And you've identified the limitation. So, for our middle school students, anybody who lives more than two miles away has the opportunity to ride a bus, and we encourage bus ridership simply because that does reduce the, the traffic. I can't, I can't require a parent to not bring their child to school via their own vehicle. So, that's just something we have to appeal to our folks to consider. But the areas that we're looking at changing attendance zones are on the north side of Highway 50. All of those, almost 75 students would qualify to ride the bus. So, there's, there's still that opportunity for those students to use our transportation system.
No, no, it says no.
If I can, that's for variances.
I think you're, I think you're thinking of the variances. So, in other words, if a, if a student living in one school zone wants to attend another that one, so transportation won't be provided if the student is on a variance. Now, again, we're going to work with folks. So, if, if a family living in the Fremont attendance zone has a seventh grader at Carson Middle School, and now they want their sixth grader to attend, we're going to ask them to do that under the auspices of a variance. But we're still, we're still going to work with those families. We're hoping that after three years, this thing will, will be full circle, and we can, we can say anybody moving out of the fifth grade at Fremont Elementary can go right to Eagle Valley Middle School. And if they don't, we're going to require them to sign a variance and follow those variance rules. But that's after we've kind of taken all the modifications that we have needed to in those first initial steps.
I'm, I'm just trying to indicate, you're already not a good neighbor for the neighborhood, and it's only going to get worse.
Yeah.
And so, I, I just don't appreciate that they didn't get notices. People don't come into a meeting if they didn't realize that Eagle Valley residents should have had the notice that OPS, starting next year, we're going to increase the student base by 25%, ergo, expect the traffic to increase by 25%.
We did notify the families, all the families at all the middle schools. Doesn't say that necessarily up there, but we
Well, I live right there and didn't get a notice. I'm just being clear.
We didn't, we didn't notice the stu, the families, but
Neither does anyone else.
We did notice the families of students who attend Eagle Valley Middle School and also Carson Middle School.
But not the standard 900 feet around the school that will impact the residents that live there? Were not notified.
We put out a press release, and we also put it in the newspaper. So, we have, we have, we have done that.
Is that the only variance, whether you have a kid one place and the family wants the next kid coming to the sixth grade, or are there other variances?
We have allowed variances throughout the school district, so not, if, if there were someone, for example, who lived in Dayton, and they were also having a student that was on a variance at that location, that would be considered. They would just have to contact the administration at the school.
Dayton? That'd be Eagle Valley, wouldn't it?
We, we have students from Douglas County, Washoe County, all over, Story County, who want to come to school here. And it sometimes even depends on where the, the parent works, and they may want to have the student attend a certain school based on ease for them to pick up or drop off. There's a variety of reasons for the variances.
Just one question. Are charter schools have gone through the same stuff that our public schools are going through in terms of, one, the vaping issues, the vaccination issues, the busing issues? They having the same deal, or they get students who probably don't have to run into all those issues?
I dare say they struggle with some of the same challenges that we do.
Right.
So, just for clarification, how are we going to deal, how are we dealing with the traffic? Because we, it has been brought up several times at the meetings. Is it, is staff working with the city, or have we have any ideas as a district?
In our first phase, we expect there could be approximately 100 students that will be new to the, to the campus. So, I don't think that that's going to have the same impact as when we hit Phase 2, when we have nearly 300 students coming. So, hopefully, there will be some time that we can work with the city and consider a few other ideas. I'm not sure that'll cost money. Obviously, we have no control over that. But we can certainly talk about maybe some of the other challenges that you folks maybe see more often than we do in terms of just traffic in town.
I, I would just add that all the schools have a problem with traffic. You know, Carson Middle School, I don't know if you've been there, when schools dropping off or picking up. Boardrick Bray, right on King Street, you know, people are driving on that road 25, 30 miles an hour when the kids are getting out. So, it's just not Eagle Valley. I mean, it, almost every school, I think, is impacted by traffic right now.
But most of your other schools have an alternate route. We don't. I mean, that's, that's part of the issue. At this school is, I can go 15 miles out and around Deer Run Road or something. It, it's not, it's just not, it doesn't have a good traffic flow to begin with.
And I think that's one of the things we're hoping that the supervisors will help with because, obviously, the traffic is out of our, out of our control. So, we, we welcome a solution to that, I think. That was one of the discussions we had at one of the forums. Anything further?
I mean, Darren has to have a great idea.
I need a road, Darren.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Next item on the agenda is the informational update regarding ongoing studies of the property located at 16 Snyder Avenue. Carson City, Nevada is a possible school location in the Carson City School District. This is for discussion only. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, members of the combined boards. Just briefly, I wanted to bring you up to speed where we are with regard to 1600 Snyder Avenue. It has been well-publicized that we're interested in this property as a potential school campus. We believe that it could certainly, should all the pieces come together, could serve the community and the school district quite well as an asset. Currently, we have an appraisal that has been ordered by the school district that has been completed, that has been discussed with our board. The original property price was listed at $5.67 million. Our appraisal came in at $4.1 million, and so, there's a significant difference there that we, it will give us an opportunity to have further discussions with the seller. The property is also currently being studied from the standpoint of an environmental Phase 2 study. And because that property was at one time a former dump site, there's some concerns about what may be under the surface, and we just want to make sure that we can answer that concern to the best of our ability. And so, we are hoping that this environmental study, Phase 2 study, will be done sometime, maybe mid-spring. So, that will give us an opportunity then to come back and have an opportunity with, with additional information to discuss terms with the seller. That's about all I have in terms of an update. We are anxious for springtime to come. We just would like to kind of tie some loose ends up here so that we could bring a presentation back to our trustees for added action or not action, depending on the case. Any questions for me with regard to that? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next item is public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on to
I don't have, I don't have public comment, but I would just like to thank both the city staff and the school district staff for putting this together. It's a big undertaking to get it out, especially in a timely manner because everything has to be posted, and the staff that comes to all the meetings. I just appreciate their time and their work ethic.
All right. Saying that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.